We do have eight o'clock here, is everyone ready?
Yep.
Alright, we will call the meeting to order at eight o'clock. Can you everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak for public discussion? Alright, none. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minutes. Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright. We have the safety committee meeting minutes in our packet. Anyone have any questions on them? Donna, anything you want to say?
Pardon me?
Anything you want to highlight on that?
I don't think there's anything that's needing further review, just look at the minutes and next Wednesday will be the wellness meeting already, so we're already coming around to that.
Okay. And then wellness is next on our agenda this week and acknowledge them. Dan, you're up for monthly update.
Alrighty.
I'm up, Dan is first.
Oh.
That's okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, good morning everybody, just got back from my spring conference. Uh, my update for my department for the end of March. Uh, we've previously had thirty-four phone calls, ninety-four messages, uh, forty-eight walk-ins and referrals. We have thirty-eight scheduled appointments in the office. Um, we did three veterans transport, got three sets of hearing aids done and completed a hundred and eight records for VA to submission. Uh, currently the, the system, VA system, I have twelve hundred and five records that I'm tracking. Uh, I've got thirty-nine claims submitted to VA for action. Six are ready for decision. Uh, I'm working on twenty-one currently for development. Uh, one supplemental claim and appeals and we're able to get, uh, one VA healthcare re-enrollment on that particular month. Still reserved for the national, uh, conference in Denver next month, so I'll be heading out there. Uh, completed our training for the spring conference here in Johnston, uh, last week. As far as outreach activities, uh, completed the activities of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Amosburg and Wimmermore. Uh, working right now with VA to re-establish the mobile medical unit. Uh, had been contacted by VA, we're looking to try and get that in place, set up. Uh, and, and try and get some specific, uh, routine, uh, visits to the county. First one is scheduled for July first. And I think Tammy, you helped me with getting that room, so I gotta touch base on a little more planning with them and, uh, we're gonna try and re-establish that with the veterans and what that is. Uh, and you'll see, uh, some of that, uh, in your handout as well. Um, what that is, is to basically bring general medical services to the veterans in Northwest Iowa where they don't have to travel so far to go down to Fort Dodge or Mason City or Des Moines. Uh, so there'll be more to follow on that. Uh, also looking to plan on the, uh, attending the breakfast, uh, county intern breakfast in May and the county breakfast in July. Uh, still working on my SOP, I got some updates that I've started on and about a third of the way through it. So I pushed that back to May for my commissioners. Um, one of the things that I'll be discussing with my commissioners right now, looking for additional drivers. Uh, one of my drivers has some heart issues, so I pulled him off. Uh, I don't have the specifics yet because I haven't met with him. But for safety purposes, he's out of the rotation, at least for right now. Uh, I have another driver that drives part-time for me when he's available. Um, that doesn't always work out, and I have another driver that's currently only gonna make runs to, uh, Reese City and Fort Dodge because he doesn't like handling the traffic in the mornings. So, I gotta, I gotta work on that. Monthly snapshot for March, uh, March's awards, five thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seven cents. Retroactive benefits were nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, the standard snapshot for the ad hoc reports you have there in front of you. Um, just note the veterans compensation piece, that is as of the beginning of this year. So that's why it didn't roll over, uh, from last year, I'm just going from year to year. Um, the accrued benefits as well, uh, which would be something that I started tracking and that's monies and benefits owed to the veteran even though they pass or it would go to the estate or to the family. That's a hundred and thirty-six thousand fifty-one dollars and sixty cents. Um, currently, there's no real updates from the VA regional office other than continuing with the PACDAC enrollments and, uh, striving to reduce the backlog of claims. I'm gonna continue to focus on the newest eligible veterans, uh, to file claims under that legislation and then also focusing on the VA healthcare enrollments. Currently awaiting the Iowa Veterans Home Minutes from the last meeting. I'll share those with you, uh, once I receive them. I do have a U.S. Service Academy Virtual Information Night that was in your packet. That's for April twenty-ninth and then April thirtieth with Senators Grassley and Ernst. Uh, for those that are interested, the high school students that may be looking to wanna attend a military academy, so that will be taking place. Uh, the key thing also that I put in your packet was, uh, as an association, we met with Governor Reynolds last week. She signed House File two-five-nine. That significant legislation that the state association and key leadership team members were working for twelve over six to seven years with our legislator to get some of this taken care of. And it is a game changer. Um, couple of things is, is it helps redefine what is a veteran under Iowa code to more closely match, uh, the federal guideline. The reason that the language was, was changed in that fashion was because you had service members in academies and higher levels of, uh, education that through their military training and while they were serving, may have gotten injured. So they become eligible for some VA benefits, however, they may not meet the, the current definition of veteran. So they can't take care of the rest of the veteran benefits such as military tax exemption, vet on driver's license, that sort of thing. So they'll be able to do that. The other thing is this legislation in House File two-five-nine specifically allocates three thousand dollars for CBSO education at nationals. Uh, our education falls under the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs here shortly. Uh, with them being, having to provide one class annually for CBSOs and one class for commissioners. However, what's been removed was the requirement to meet the sixteen continuing education units that are required in order to maintain the job. So, the classes that are being taught and trained will be probably more along the lines of various state programs to help bring us up to speed on that in addition to the refresher training. But you must get your CEUs at a national level. So therefore, all CBSOs, uh, either present or newly hired to acquire their initial accreditation at nationals and then annually every year to attend a national conference to maintain their CEUs. Now they can go to the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers Conference, which is what I attend, or they can select a national conference either with the VFW, the American Legion, Vietnam Vets of America and so on. And that will allow them to maintain their CEUs. Uh, legislation also talks about having what is called a personal identification verification card, or they call it the PIV card. That's now, that's now a condition, effective one July, it will become a requirement to have that in order to keep your job. So first part is the sixteen CEUs at national. Second part is the PIV card that must be maintained. And, uh, in order to do that, there is some things that you have to go through to obtain that because what will essentially happen as a county employee, what you get in return is you get a federally accredited and trained service officer. This person will have been basically accredited by a national organization. There would have been federal background check, fingerprint, credit check, basic computer training, and then vetted in VA systems to use their computer systems and software. So that's a, a big step up. They will end up with a security clearance, most likely confidential, uh, depending on their role or if they're actually going to be working in VA. Uh, some key takeaways, uh, got to meet with, uh, Esquire Christie Baglow of the Vets Consortium. She was a key speaker for us to help work with veterans that needed discharge upgrades. So we got some information on how to start the process with that and how to best take care of veterans who are looking to upgrade the history. Uh, Dr. Carrie Jackson was a Gulf War, uh, veteran and also a doctor and a former CMP examiner with VA. So we got to meet with her and discuss some of the pertinent issues unique to Gulf War veterans. Uh, currently working with the education team on the spring survey from school to see how that went and then posting the slides in addition to just kinda getting caught up having been out of the office for a week. So, subject to your questions, that's all I have at this point in time. Alright.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Take a bow, will you take them?
Yeah.
Oh, your sign's not on the back.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Donna, if you're ready.
Beth. Morning.
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 Oh, keep it brief, I know you've got a full day. Um, general assistance, I think the highlights, the moratorium ended April first. And as anticipated, that is a time of year where we see a lot of individuals with high utility bills. That is as expected, community action has less funds, so that is creating kind of a barrier. Back-to-back funerals, one in March, couple in April, so that has really, um, put a tightness to the end of the year for the budget. Not a lot of, um, ability to do things. Or we'll have to be very guarded until we can get through that period to assure that there'll be funding available. Um, again, transportation and form completion is probably the highlights. Um, individuals need help. Quite a few with Medicaid reviews, um, they're losing their coverage because those reviews haven't been completed in a timely manner. And I think that's about it, if you have further questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sam.
And then in our packet, we have the Casus Regional Health Centers adopted budget and certificate of taxes. Is there any questions on that? Otherwise, we will acknowledge that. Then, next up is the elected official compensation schedule by resolution Which is in our packet, is there any discussion? If not, I'd
Need a motion?
Yep, I'd entertain a motion for this resolution.
Motion.
Okay, move by a jar, or a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And what does the resolution state?
This includes a zero percent increase for all elected officials. Any further discussion from the board? Roll call ball, please.
Beth. Jerks.
Yes.
Whackster.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Motion carried, yes. Now we each sign here.
Yeah.
Alright. And this is fair.
What, which one, which resolution is it?
I didn't, I don't think the others have the same thing.
Yeah, no, I
That's, that's figured I'd catch up if you signed it. Okay. Thank you. There's that copy. And that concludes our agenda until eight-thirty. We will open the public hearing for the budget. We have about fifteen minutes here in between.
I was here, like it shows a positive number, sure, which is re-estimated. Positive percentage. And that, this number's lower than that's over. But then here, this number's higher than that's over. You might be right.
This goes.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, that would be your amendment and stuff, that's the total call. It says just that one.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I didn't think to get water before we started. Check, check. I tried to get through.
This is a
Yep. Yeah, I laid it off the table.
Yeah.
Alright. Yep.
This was one super powerful.
One, one pin come out of the
She didn't even know what she was doing.
I'm sending them.
You don't He's giving four which one so thing you want to like I can time that's true that's alright so to you sure this I
Wow. I'll check that out.
Yeah.
Trying to get here and that. Yeah. Paid for travels. That gets rolled off there pretty easily usually if it's light. If it's light, it'll be gone in a couple days of traffic. That'll be easier to see that way for everyone else on the screen. Unless you have a preference, you know, if you'd rather have something on. Donna, Donna, are those Marines papers or yours? Are those your papers?
My papers.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if they were Marines.
Nope, they're mine. For the, for later.
Okay. For the visas. Alright, well, we have eight-thirty, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Do we need roll call on this one? Roll call.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. Perfect, thank you. The budget, public hearing is open.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Tammy Eden, Cassuth County Auditor. Um, this morning, I'm gonna be presenting the budget that the board has worked on since January for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And that, um, budget will take effect July first of this year. Um, first, before I get started, I wanna send a huge thank you to Adam and the Engineers Office. Every year, Adam takes the numbers that we give him and turns them into this PowerPoint presentation. So without Adam helping us, it would be a lot more work for us, so, um, I extend a huge thank you to Adam and the Engineers Office for all their work that they do. Um, also to my staff, um, Melissa's here, she's gonna help with the presentation this morning, and my whole staff who, um, helps tremendously through this process, picking up the, the slack of the stuff that I can't do when we're in the middle of budget season, so, thank you to them as well. Um, this is really informal, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I don't expect you to wait till the end if you have a question about something, so you don't forget what it is. So we'll go ahead and get started. The first slide that we're gonna talk about is gonna be our current fiscal year tax examples. So the pie graph on the left-hand side shows the property tax distribution from a property in the city of Algonah. Forty-six point eight percent of that goes to the city of Algonah. Twenty-nine point nine percent goes to the Algonah School. Fourteen point five goes to Cassuth County. Three point two five goes to County Trust. Three point four goes to Community College, and EMS receives two point two percent. The pie graph on the right-hand side shows the property tax distribution from a property in Burke Township. Fifty-two percent goes to Algonah School. Thirty-three point five to Cassuth County. Five point nine to the Community College. Three point nine to the Township. And three point nine to County EMS. And point eight percent to the County Trust. On the next slide, I'm gonna talk about the county's revenue details. The numbers that I'll be going through are under Budget Twenty-four, Twenty-five on the right-hand side. Taxes levied on property will be eleven million, five hundred and fifty thousand, ninety-seven dollars. Less credit to taxpayers of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars for a net current property tax of eleven million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Penalties, interest, and costs on taxes are twenty-four thousand. Other county taxes, sixty-three hundred. Local option sales tax, one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. TIP revenues of a hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Utility replacement taxes, five hundred and ninety-nine dot, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and one dollars, which brings the subtotal to one million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-six dollars. Internet, intergovernmental revenue. State shared revenues in the amount of six million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. State replacements against levied taxes, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Other stack, state tax replacements, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. State and federal pass-through revenues, thirty thousand. Contributions from other intergovernmental units, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. State grants and entitlements, eight hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Payments in lieu of taxes, eleven thousand, five hundred, which brings the subtotal to eight million, two hundred and twelve dollars, six hundred and ninety-one. Licenses and permits, forty-one thousand. Charges for services, one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Use of money and property, four hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Miscellaneous, one hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars for a total revenue of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and one thousand, twenty-three million, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Other financing sources include operating transfers in from General Basic, three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. From Rural Services Basic, three million, four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for a subtotal of three million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Proceeds in general long-term debt, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Proceeds from general fixed asset sales of thirty thousand, which brings our total revenue and other sources to twenty-seven million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars. And if you add in the beginning fund balance from July first of twenty-twenty-four of nine million, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, it brings the total resources to thirty-six million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. On the next slide, we're gonna talk about our expenditures. The expenditures are broken down by service area. We're gonna start with Service Area One, which is Public Safety and Legal Services. This includes ambulance, county attorney, district court, medical examiner, and sheriff. And I'll just be reading the subtotals in each category. The Law Enforcement Program, three million, five hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Legal Services Program, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Emergency Services, two million, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Assistance to District Court, fifteen hundred. Court Proceedings Program, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Juvenile Justice, thirty-six thousand, which total for Service Area One in Public Safety and Legal Services, six million, four hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. On the next slide is Service Area Three. This is Physical Health and Social Services. This includes General Assistance, Human Services, Mental Health and General Basic, Elder Bridge, Sanitarian, and Veterans Affairs. The Physical Health Services Program, hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Services to Poor, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Services to Military Veterans, hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Children and Family Services, four thousand. Services to Other Adults, fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which brings our total to three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. The next slide is Service Area Six. This is County Environment and Education, which includes Conservation, Nature Center, Fair, Historical Society, Libraries, and Weed Officer. Environmental Quality Program, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. Conservation and Recreation Services, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven. County Development Programs, two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Educational Services, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Brings the total for Service Area Six to one million, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. The next slide is Service Area Seven, which is Roads and Transportation, which includes the Engineer and Secondary Road. Secondary Roads and Administration and Engineering, nine hundred and five thousand, nine hundred. Roadway Maintenance, five million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. General Roadway Expenditures, three million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Total Roads and Transportation, ten million, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The next slide is Service Area Eight, which is Government Services to Residents, which includes Elections, Township Clerks, Trustees, Recorder, and Treasurer. Representation Services Program, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. State Administrative Services, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, which brings the total to one million, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. The next slide is Service Area Nine, which is Administration. This includes the Annex, the Auditor, Courthouse, Election Center Expenses, Custodians, IT, GIS, Unemployment, CPA Audit, Supervisors, and Human Resources. Policy and Administration Program, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Central Services Program, one million, four hundred and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Risk Management Services Program, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred dollars, which brings the total Administration to three million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. The next slide is Service Area Zero, which is Non-Program Expenditures, Disbursements, and Other Financing Uses. This includes Conservation, Reef Conservation Reserve, Crisis Intervention, Transit, Technical Services, Care Team, ISAC, R S V P, and Tourism. Non-Program Current Expenditures, seventy-one thousand, thirty-two dollars. Capital Projects, two million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which brings the total expenditures to twenty-five million, forty-four dollars, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, and that is for all Service Areas. Operating Transfers Out are three million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. This brings our Ending Fund Balance projected for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five to seven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, which brings our total expenditures to thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-two doubt, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. On the next slide, I'm gonna break this information down into pie graphs, and this is what it looks like for the twenty-four, twenty-five revenue. Where's our revenue coming from? Thirty-four point five percent is coming from Property Tax. Twenty-seven point eight percent is our Beginning Balance. Twenty-five point four percent is Intergovernmental. Five point nine is Other Tax. Four point one is Charge for Service. One point four is Use of Money. And point nine percent is Miscellaneous. The total revenue, including the Beginning Fund Balance, is thirty-two thousand, thirty-two million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. The next slide breaks down into pie graphs where the money is going. Thirty-one percent is going to Roads and Transportation. Twenty-two point six is the Ending Fund Balance. Twenty percent Public Safety. Eleven point five Administration. Seven point one, Non-Program and Capital Projects. Three point four, County Environment. Three point three, Government Services. One point one, Health and Social Service Services for total expenditures of thirty-two million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. In the next slide, we're gonna take those expenditures and subtract the Ending Fund Balance. So without the Ending Fund Balance, forty point two percent goes to Roads and Transportation. Twenty-five point eight to Public Safety. Fourteen point nine to Administration. Nine point one to Non-Program Expenditures. Four point four to County Government. Four point two to Government Services. One point four to Health and Social Services for total expenditures minus the Ending Balance of twenty-five million, forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And the next slide, our estimated Beginning Balance for July first of twenty-twenty-four is eight million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Eleven point five nine percent is Secondary Road. Forty-seven point eight three, General Fund. Thirty-seven point zero four, Rural Services. And three point five four percent in Others. The next slide is our estimated Ending Fund Balance, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. That balance equals seven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Eight, thirty-eight point six four is Rural Services. Fifty-two point nine one is General Funds. Two point one two percent is Secondary Road. And six point three three is Others. And the next slide, I'm gonna show the fund history of General Basic, General Supplemental, and Rural Basic over the last three years, and where we are in this current fiscal year. On your printouts, it cut off the last part of the last, um, column, but it is up on the screen, so, um, it will show that last column up there if you want to look up there. So, in twenty-twenty-one, eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, eight million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars of revenue went into General Basic. One million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six of that was ARPA Funds, which is the American Rescue Plan, which means, um, COVID Funds. Bringing the total without, out ARPA to seven million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. General Basic had six million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars in expenses, with no ARPA expenses for a total of six million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, for a net of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three. In twenty-twenty-one, two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, thirty-seven dollars went into General Supplemental. General Supplemental had two million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars in expenses for a net of a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. In twenty-twenty-one, Rural Basic had three million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars in revenue, and three million, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight in expenses for a net of four hundred and sixteen thousand, forty-four dollars. We're gonna keep moving down on the chart, so if we go to twenty-one, twenty-two, eight million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars went into General Basic. Of that, one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six was ARPA for General Basic without ARPA of six million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Expenses were seven million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for a net of one forty-two, three forty-five. ARPA expenses, one million, eighty-one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars for a net of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. And without ARPA, General Basic was six million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for a net of two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Negative, that doesn't mean there's a negative fund balance. That just means that our revenue, um, was less than what our expenses were. And to try to explain this a little bit, so we received ARPA Funds, one point four million in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, but none of our revenue, or none of our expenses were incurred until twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're gonna show bigger revenues those first two years, um, but we're not gonna have any expenses that first year, so they're gonna carry on to the next two years. In General Supplemental, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we had two million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars in revenue, two million, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars in expenses for a net of two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Rural Basic Revenue, three million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, fifty-two dollars. Expenses, two million, nine hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars for a net of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. In twenty-two, twenty-three, General Basic had revenue of six million, eight hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, of which, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars was ARPA, which bring their General Basic revenue to six million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our expenses were eight million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, of which, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars was ARPA for a total of seven million, six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. That brings our net for General Basic, um, without ARPA to one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. General Supplemental in twenty... two, twenty-three? That's where I am, right? Got lost.
Yep, yep.
Our revenue, two million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Expenses, two million, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a net of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Rural Basic Revenue, three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Expenses, two million, nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred for a net of four hundred and fifty-nine, nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we're not done with twenty-four yet, so this is just to date. Our Revenue in General Basic, six million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our Expenses, six million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. No ARPA Revenue, and so far, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars in expenses. Our General Basic Revenue without ARPA was six million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And our Expenses, six million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which brings our General Basic Net Without ARPA to a hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. General Supplemental Revenue, two million, ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Expenses, one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars, which brings our net to two which brings our net to two twenty-three, eight sixty-one. Our revenue for rural basic, two million eight hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Our expenses, two million four hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, for a net of four twenty-four, one sixty-four. Our next slide talks about twenty-three, twenty-four tax levy example in the city of Algonah. So if you have a house assessed at a hundred and nine thousand twenty dollars, you take that by point five four six five zero one, which is the state rollback, equals fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. If you multiply that by thirty-three dollars, eight hundred, thirty-three point eight three six four per a thousand, which is our millage rate, equals two thousand fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. You subtract the homestead credit of a hundred and sixty-four dollars and eleven cents, you'll come up to the net tax of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Of that, eighteen hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty-six point two two goes to the city of Algonah. Twenty-nine point four nine goes to Algonah schools. Nine point eight five percent goes to county general basic. Three point nine three, general supplemental. Three point three two, community college. Two, three point one nine to the hospital. Two point two two to county EMS. Point eight two to the assessor. Point five zero to county rural services. Point four five to ag extension and point zero one state levies. And the next slide, and I take the same year. This is gonna be a levy example in Burke Township. The tax example is a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and sixty acres at fourteen hundred and nineteen dollars average an acre equals two hundred and twenty-seven thousand forty dollars in assessed value, times the state rollback of point nine one six four three zero zero, equals two hundred and eight thousand sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. If you multiply that times the millage rate of twenty point five one seven nine four per thousand, it equals four thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nine cents. If you subtract the ag land and family farm credit of two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents, you get the net tax of four thousand thirty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. Of that net tax, forty-eight point six three goes to the school district. Seventeen point zero six goes to county general basic. Seven point seven goes to county rural services. Six point four eight goes to county general supplemental. Five point four eight to area college. Five point two six to the hospital. Three point six six to county EMS. Three point six two to the township. One point three six to the assessor. Point seven four to ag extension and point zero one to state levies. Nope, twenty-three, twenty-four, they're last years, yep. In the last slide, I'm gonna talk about today. It talks about past, current and proposed tax examples for two different properties. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we're taking a land that had a taxable value of ag land of two hundred and two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the general basic levy rate was three dollars and fifty cents. General supplemental was one dollar and forty-four, one dollar forty-four zero six two. Rural basic, one point seven four nine eight eight, which had the total levy of six dollars and sixty-nine cents. The taxes on that property, general basic saw seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents. General supplemental, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Rural basic, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents, which is a total of one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. If you take that same property to twenty-three, twenty-four, the general basic levy is the same. General supplemental is a dollar thirty-three. EMS now is added in there for seventy-five cents. And rural basic is a dollar fifty-eight, which brings the total levy to seven dollars and sixteen cents. That property is now valued at two hundred and eight thousand ninety-six dollars. Brings the total of those taxes to one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, which is a change in previous dollars of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, which is ten point one four percent. That same property, for this next fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, will be valued at two hundred and twelve thousand and twenty-three dollars. General basic at three point five. General supplemental, one point six. EMS, point seven five. And rural basic, one point five four nine zero two, which is the total levy of seven point three nine nine zero two. The total taxes in twenty-four, twenty-five will be one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, which is a change of seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, which is five point two nine percent. Now we're gonna go to a town property. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the value of that property was fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-one cents. The general basic levy rate was three dollars and fifty cents. General supplemental, one point four four zero six two, for a total of four thousand, or four dollars, four point nine four zero six two, for a total tax of two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. In twenty-three, twenty-four, that property is now valued at fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. The levies for general basic is three point five. General supplemental, one point three three. Now EMS of seventy-five cents, which brings the total to five dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is a total in taxes on that property of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents, which is a change from the previous year of forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, which is a one sixteen point three five percent difference. That same property in this next fiscal year will be valued at fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. The general basic levy rate, three point five. General supplemental, one point six. EMS, seventy-five cents, which brings a total of five dollars and eighty-five cents. The total taxes will be three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five, thirty-five cents, which is a change of eighty-nine cents, which is a percentage of point two seven percent. And that ends the budget presentation. And I'll turn on the lights, and if you have any questions for the board, you can. Do you want the lights back on, Roger?
No, I just didn't get the last couple of numbers there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I can print you that too, Roger, if you want.
Yeah, I'm Lori Peterson from the Fenton Public Library. If we could turn back to Service Area Six for just a second, please. I just wanted to clarify something. So as I'm looking on that page, it appears that for the next fiscal year, you're going to be cutting approximately two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Is that correct? Compared to last year's? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And of that budget coming up for our next fiscal year, of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand is being cut from the library budgets, correct? Okay? Which means thirty-five thousand is being taken from other departments. So, it's hard for me to believe that libraries have not been deliberately and disproportionately targeted in cuts under Service Area Six. When you look at a hundred and eighty-three thousand out of two hundred and twenty-three thousand is coming right on the backs of the libraries. I came today speaking as a resident and as the librarian in Fenton to just remind all of the supervisors that we are going to hold you accountable. So on July ninth, when you meet again, we will be here and we will be expecting that you will have looked at this and that you have seriously thought about what you are going to be doing to the communities of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just kind of to comment on that, libraries come out of rural services, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, the fund balance is more than twenty-five percent, the ending fund balance. So I guess I would like to request that after July, because I know you could not do that this, you know, right now and make that change the day before the budget hearing, I would really like to request that you use that fund balance to give the libraries back their money. There's plenty of money in that fund balance. It is way over the twenty-five percent threshold. So I just, I guess I don't even understand why it was cut to begin with, would that help the other fund balance? Can anyone answer why it was cut with the ending fund balance going to be over the twenty-five percent threshold?
Did that happen when you were making the numbers around with the helping trades and stuff?
No.
That wasn't happening?
No. I laid out my reasons yesterday. If you want me to repeat, I can, but.
Well, yeah, I would like to know. I was unable to be here or watch the video before now.
Does anyone?
Just a quick, just a quick, I know you guys gotta get moving, but.
So prior to that reduction, we would have been looking at a def- projected deficit of about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand of expenses and transfers versus revenue coming in.
Okay, why though? I guess I don't understand, like, how do you go to a deficit to being two point eight million at the end? That, I don't know the gap. What's the gap?
A substantial increase in transfers to secondary roads.
Well, the secondary road transfers are included in that, though. In the rural services. I mean, a- after you take that out, you still have a ending fund balance of two point eight million.
But it'd be a projected deficit. Even right now, it's a projected deficit of about five hundred and fifty thousand.
That doesn't show on this sheet. It shows two point eight million. Am I reading it incorrectly? There's no deficit. And you honestly can't have a budget with a deficit in a budget.
No, not a deficit of the fund, a deficit between the projected revenue and expenses.
Right, but you had enough, you know, Tammy had that slide where it showed the differences and the money that was net. So the fund balance is still healthy. Even if you raised the transfers, the fund balance was still healthy enough to sustain the library's funding. Because if I did the calculation correct, your ending fund balance is more like seventy-five percent, not twenty-five percent, when you take the total requirements of the expenses, times twenty-five percent.
Is that correct?
Right now, we would be projected to end at about two point eight million. And right now, our expenditures and transfers would be in the four million ballpark, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just very respectfully asking that after July first, even though I think it's unnecessary that we're in a position where we're gonna have to possibly do a budget amendment to give them their funding back, because there's obviously money in that budget. I just kindly ask that you please give them that money back.
Does anyone else from the board have anything they wanna say?
Or at least make the cut a lot less than seventy-five percent to the library.
We feel targeted because it could have been, we can take five percent from each department, but instead we bam, we burned all the libraries to the ground.
Right.
Seventy-five percent. I know you said you don't go to libraries, but I don't go to the bar. That doesn't mean I want them closed. I don't come to the courthouse very often. Doesn't mean I want it to close. I understand things are important, but you literally targeted the libraries with that seventy-five percent figure. You have no idea what that's doing to us.
These small towns, the library is their meeting place.
It's all we've got.
This is where you check on senior citizens. If somebody hasn't showed up for a couple of days, you're gonna check on them.
We're now Algonah.
Close, there is no safety net.
When we come in here for our budget proposal every year, and you ask us, what are you doing? How are you, you know, how's it going? And you yes us and congratulate us on doing such great things for our county and the people in our towns, and then you're like, well, do it with this bag of peanuts and see how far that gets you. That hurts, because libraries aren't just a business. They're personal. It's not just books. It's people you are hurting. Who cares if we can't buy new books?
Yeah, it's also about the children, which is actually more important than anything.
You're hurting the kids.
Yeah, we gotta think of the future where we're going, and it involves the kids. In any town or any situation, it always comes back to the kids, no matter what the problem is. And it's gonna, it's gonna get, it's just not right for the kids. It's, they're more important than we are. They're our future.
Yeah, we love the libraries. What do the kids have? Let's not start vandalizing and stealing and tearing up stuff, because they've got no structured place to be.
The reality is, and you need to understand this, if our small libraries close, that is the death knell for our towns. Our senior citizens, our preschoolers, our kids who are afraid to go home, our people who don't have other resources or ways to get to Algonah to get out, doing social work-related things. That is all gone. Without the libraries, the towns will die.
I'd like to back off all this emotional stuff for a second, though. And Kyle, you never have answered the question. Or none of you have ever answered the question. Why did you take so much from the libraries? What was your rationale as to why you took the money from the libraries? I haven't heard that yet.
I can speak, yeah.
Now, Carter, what was the reasoning?
Just for me personally, rationale. When we sat down on February twenty-second to have that budget workshop, and we went back to the recording to watch that, because I was a little confused on what numbers I was given at that time, that I was looking at the per capita funding for the libraries. And so when I looked at those numbers, there was a comment made that, well, it's not gonna hardly affect the rural libraries. It's mostly gonna affect Algonah. And so, so I was looking at just those per capita numbers, which to use Laverne as an example, they would have lost about fifteen hundred dollars in funding, which I was okay with, you know, and we would do just fine with that. But then suddenly last week, and then, well, then to finish that, I believe in the attempt to explain to me, we got derailed to another subject, and it never came back to that. And so I had in my mind that Laverne Public Library was losing fifteen hundred dollars in funding for the year, which is not true. And so last week, I get a phone call that you're cutting seventy-five percent of the library's budget, and that was news to me. And I, that's partly my fault too, and I did not dig enough into that. There's so many working parts of the budget that I didn't come back to that, and that's my fault too. But that was not what I was thinking in my head that the libraries, because it would be closer to the tune of twelve, thirteen thousand dollars that they would be losing, using my community as an example. And so, that's, I feel absolutely terrible being in this position. And that's where I'm personally coming from. It was never really explained or corrected, and I didn't put two and two together that the number was that big of an impact, and I don't know why, but that's, that's where I'm at there, and I have full intentions of resolving that and supporting the libraries come July.
Thank you, Carter. Could I ask, though, that each one of you tell us your reasoning for this decision? Because it's not just one person that makes the decision. One person can vote the way his conscience feels right. But all of you have a say in this. I would love it if you would just go down the line and tell us why you made this decision. It wasn't just his, his inexperience. There's two very experienced people on board. Would you like to start?
Well, I wanna make a comment to that, you know, similar to what Carter was saying, when it was kind of explained to me, the way I understood it was that, you know, if we changed from the divided payment, that we would go to the tech grant, and I thought that that was actually going to help the rural, you know, when we were talking with the numbers. And at that time, we were cutting back, you know, other areas on our. Um, and at that time, we were cutting back, you know, other areas on our, um, in the, uh, service area six, and we were cutting back the economic development. We were cutting back the, the fair contributions and stuff. So when we were looking at the numbers, we were trying to cut back those expenditures. Uh, since then, we have added back into some economic development, some back to the fair. Uh, and I'll, I'll admit that, you know, the, the libraries did get missed in that, that portion. And it was because I, you know, didn't fully understand the numbers that we were looking at to, you know, how that divided payment was going out versus the tech grant dollars. Because we increased the tech grant dollars, and I was thinking that was gonna actually help the, the rural libraries more than it would, you know, for the Elgonah Library. Um, so there was a little bit of confusion on the numbers there, and again, I, you know, same with Carter. I feel horrible for being in this position, um, having done that, and, you know, as yesterday, I had made that motion that we were gonna, uh, meet on July ninth with the expectation of getting that funding back to the libraries.
Mr. Josh, you're my supervisor, so I'd like to hear from you, why, why you approve the seventy-five thousand, seventy-five percent cut?
Well, we were talking about using the lost money, which I guess went to the library in the past. And there was some discussion on taking all of the lost money and putting it into rural services. And that's kind of where I got lost in.
So you basically didn't know what you were doing?
No, we knew what we were doing.
Oh, you didn't know what you were doing. You knew you were cutting a seventy-five percent.
I knew we were doing it.
So what was your reason? I, because I still haven't had a good answer.
Long time ago, we voted to use the lost revenue for rural basic and for libraries. And when all the money needed to go to rural basic, it wasn't handing it out to the libraries at that time.
So you don't value the libraries?
I didn't say that.
Roger, I'm not an experienced board member by any means. That was not how it was explained in, in the transferring of local option sales tax.
Yeah, well, that's, our local option sales tax worked in the past.
To my knowledge, local option sales tax has never directly gone to libraries. It's gone into the rural fund.
It went into the rural fund.
Which libraries are paid out of the rural fund, so they are the same pot of money to some extent, but I don't think it's ever been specifically directed that way, not to my knowledge.
Was that something we could change then?
I, I don't, I don't know.
That deals with the ballot blanking, which was what that was sorted on.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I don't believe so.
Just asking.
I'd like to make a comment. For years, first of all, up to six up there, three of you are naive enough to not see what was going on. Three of you don't care. But the older ones, for years, you've been warned that that secondary road fund has been a gremlin. And you have just, you've been warned about it. You allowed someone to handle it, and he fed it after midnight, and it got wet. And his I wants turned to we needs and turned into a monster we now have. You guys allowed a nine hundred thousand dollar amendment last summer with no resistance whatsoever. You're afraid to handle in that monster. Now you expect all the taxpayers to live on less when you can't. Very few families have a twenty-five percent cushion in their budgets. When have you dropped below twenty percent in yours? And for how long did you stay below twenty percent?
You're talking the ending fund balance.
Ending fund balance.
So I believe that is state requirement that we have.
It's just a guideline.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It, it's a guideline, but it's due to the calendar of when our fiscal year ends versus when property taxes start to come in. So it's, it's not, it's not as much of a want or desire as a need to be able to say.
When have you fallen below twenty percent and for how long?
Well, you can't fall below twenty percent. You can't take your bills for months. You're waiting for the.
I understand. When have you fallen below twenty percent? Never, never.
Never have.
Never have.
I appreciate that man's comment, but we still haven't heard from the other, um, board members about their reasoning for the cut. We just need, we need information so we can prepare for July night. I appreciate your saying.
These guys came to the Farm Bureau Board meeting in March. And they told us that they cut two hundred thousand from the libraries because it was an easily, easy cut. That's exactly what they said.
Recorded, can we get that?
Tried out, it was recorded, but that's exactly what was said out there.
Thank you for sharing that. I really appreciate that very much.
That was the first of March, the first Tuesday of March, you guys. Whoever was sitting there, not all of you were, but you said that was an easy cut.
Especially if you don't inform us that we're getting that cut.
We just found out yet, uh, last week.
And we were not informed.
So again, I would just like the other members that weren't able to respond why they did this to have a chance this week.
It's part of the discretionary spending. That's the one thing we had control over, mostly because that's a board, these board money that's spent outside of the realm of state mandates. And we were looking to reduce, uh, spend just by approximately one point seven million dollars without having to raise taxes by sixteen percent. Uh, we said last, uh, yesterday, we had land farmers coming there, they were looking at nine dollar rate of increase in taxes. And they, they said that is unsustainable with prices where they're at today, going down, cash runs where they're at, their machinery costs are up.
Sure. I, I was wondering why you picked the libraries to pick on all these children.
We didn't just pick them. We went through all the discretionary spending. And, um, uh, we took, we took, uh, money out of pretty much everything out there. We probably got a little heavy handed on libraries. I won't say that. But I guess we can't change that now, but we are gonna readdress that come January ninth, and I presume that we're gonna, we'll, we'll be able to find a way to replace that funding.
I'm encouraged by that.
So we can, you know, we can talk and point fingers and howl and scream and make accusations, but I guess the things are better than days, and yesterday, we maybe, we're gonna take that up on January ninth.
July.
July.
July, I'm sorry, and, um, and we'll, 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 we'll return, you know, things.
I, I'm encouraged by that. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a clear understanding.
It was a budget thing. I mean, we were looking at things at one point seven, and that, and that's not there. Our employees took it.
Oh, I understand.
They're, they're gonna, the employees are gonna contribute close to three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to health insurance.
Sure.
As one of the local ladies in the back, we were having a discussion. And, you know, that's gonna affect the, not only in their, their three thousand dollars a year without a raise, but they're also gonna, it's also gonna affect the retirement program, because that's gonna drop their salaries to, and they're gonna get less in retirement, so. It wasn't my life. There was a lot of things at hand.
That's, that's not accurate, Jack. It does not affect retirement.
No, it won't affect their.
The pay that comes out pre-tax.
Increases, no, salary raises.
The, yeah, the pay cut affects retirement, not the health insurance.
If the health comes out pre-tax, it lowers your gross income.
Oh, right.
I personally.
I personally agree.
It's gross, so we're insured.
Yeah, that's true. They'll pay you some off if we got insurance, but we don't get insurance.
But it, but just to get out, to get out there, it was, uh, it was probably, uh, extreme, and I guess the thing, we consider it out of the next hour, but bear, we'll, 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 we'll undoubt it, we'll make an adjustment to that. And try to correct.
Hey, I see Carter changed it here. I did, and I think, well, did you, did you have a chance yesterday?
I, I did lay out.
Clarify.
What's that?
Or I just thought maybe you would like to clarify or restate.
Um, so I did, I did share a lot of my concerns. Yes, our fund balance right now is healthy. I'm concerned about the long-term impacts of it. Um, the local option sales tax has never been specifically designated to libraries, to my knowledge. And I was not the one that made the comment at Farm Bureau that the library cut was easy. That never was my position. Um, I, I don't know that I have anything further to add substantially. But I, I do look forward to making changes after the fiscal year starts and restoring that.
So I guess I'm just saying, it just allows us to work through the process. We'll, uh, sure, we'll get, get, uh, some correction made there, uh, and, you know, change, make some changes. And that's what I'd say.
That's good because talk is cheap. Action gets results. Are you saying that? That's a really positive thing for us to hear.
We, we need you.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, we need you guys to understand that that was literally burning libraries to the ground yesterday. That's what it looked like to everybody who was here and everybody who watched it. So to hear you say that today that, whoop, we messed up, we do value libraries, we're gonna fix that July ninth. We need to hear that because we all went home last night and thought, what do we cut?
And there's nothing wrong with making mistakes, it's just fixing it. You know, that, there's no point in, it was like you talked about, you can make a mistake, but just fix it, that's all. I mean, it's not as easy as that.
Own up to the mistake. Own up to it.
Oh, yeah, but, and, and everything's fixable, you know?
So I, you know, it's, we can't, we can't change it today, and, and, uh, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take, we'll work on it, and, uh, and we'll find a way to, you know, make it right.
Thank you, thank you.
So last week, did you give the economic back part of their money? Yes?
Yeah.
Did you give the fair back part of their money?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, what about us beaver trappers? Did you give us any back part of our money?
Yes.
Yep.
Because you cut the library seventy-five percent, you cut us beaver trappers a hundred percent. Drop the whole ton of. There's several guys that called me, the trappers, and they were concerned about it, that they might not trap, and you guys could be in trouble with drainage. We clean out a lot of beaver. There's a lot of area that don't have drainage. There's one guy joked, well, just throw the beaver tails on that drainage. Well, that ain't right. Like Roger owns a ground with cricket in it. I only catch three beaver. I can't say I caught ten there, because Roger's gonna write the check out. So we need that supervisory fund to back us like you've done since I was in grade school.
Well, beavers move.
Beavers move. After two years, mama kicks a, a two-year-old's out. So thank you if you are gonna put some money in the fund.
Can you, I was gonna ask about, um, what service area was that, that'd be under administration as a supervisor? What's the service area nine?
Yep.
Okay, I can see it.
I was gonna ask, what, what was brought back last week when I was gone?
I think it was.
Exactly, for.
Was it five thousand or six?
For that and for.
Five or six.
Economic development and the fair.
I believe we did five.
Five for animal.
And we brought, um, back to one hundred and twenty for economic. And then we brought back to twenty. We had a twenty back to the fair. So the fair's back to twenty-five and putting the, uh, brigade.
Okay, that's where the twenty-five is coming from.
That's in, that's in six.
Six, yeah.
Yep.
And then for economic development, uh, where's the two sixty-three coming from then?
Oh. Oh, that's from.
What do you mean? What's two sixty-three?
Oh, okay, okay. That, that doesn't add.
No, that's twenty-three.
Twenty-three, oh, that's from four Septo.
Okay, where's this? Well, that's coming from above.
Yeah, the other one forty-three is TIF.
Okay, okay, that's, that's where I'm getting.
That's, that's the other sources of funds.
Thanks.
Yep.
So this game, I, it won't, it won't be a January, I mean, July night, you'll be, you'll be looking to work on this continuously from now to then, so when that day comes, hopefully we'll have what our game plan is to, you know, make some changes there, so.
And.
My expectations are we, we'll work on this continuously, you know, we've got.
And that, that, keep in mind, that won't go in effect on July ninth, because we do have a process to go through for budget amendment and stuff, but we will be making decisions.
Wait, you can't make a decision until the budget amendment, but you can discuss.
We will discuss.
It will be discussed, and we'll have a path forward.
I got a question for you five. Do you guys consider yourself, because I was there for four years. One week I might be here for three hours. That's what I did all week. Next week I might be forty hours. Do you guys consider yourself full-time or part-time?
Depending on the week, I guess.
Because if you're part-time, why do you, if you wanna save a hundred and twenty grand, why do you get health insurance? I mean, you need some benefit. I say you guys still get hypers. But two of you already voted you're not gonna take the insurance. These two are on their way out. And that one, when I worked with him, he was honest. He always said right up front, insurance to our age doesn't mean nothing. It's, it doesn't count. Now he's getting older, sure.
I said it doesn't mean as much. I didn't say nothing.
So if you drop the health insurance, there's a one twenty right there. I mean, just a suggestion. Because like you've got a different job, you got insurance to somebody else right there, or probably. I'm guessing, you or your wife work.
Well, my, my insurance actually comes through my retirement from military, so.
Like I said, it's just a suggestion, because there's, there's a hundred and twenty laying there.
You can always just go set next year.
I don't, how do you figure a hundred and twenty?
Twenty-four thousand a person? Five people, do the math. That's one twenty, right?
Single is not, is not twenty-four thousand a year.
What's the single then? I was just told a few weeks ago, we were asking.
What is it?
It was twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars for a family, and because Josh and I are both married, we have family policy. Kyle is not married.
Nine thousand, ten thousand-ish?
Ten thousand, six hundred.
Ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-six. So that's less than half of what you're talking.
Quite a bit less than half.
Quite a bit less than half.
And I imagine you have a single father, yeah.
But, but either way, I, I just was curious. I'm not, I'm not opposed to supporting the things that we put back in, but just where, where is that money going then? Or how are we, how are we making that work? I just wanna, I mean, we cut those things for reasons, uh, everything that we're, we're talking about. Um, so what, uh, where is that, where's that coming out of? I guess. Is that just spending that much down the fund balance?
Fund balance, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But what is the percent?
And that will affect it how? Or, I mean, how will the fund balance be by the end of that?
It's projected in the numbers I gave you that day, so it's.
We'll be healthy by the end of this next fiscal year, but going forward, it will eventually get to the point where it is unsustainable. And I think that's the, the long.
The, the fund balance worksheet we have from four seventeen would not include that.
Is the last one. Pull that.
Okay, yeah, this would be from four twenty-two. So, um, actually, no, general basics the same.
It should be. I think I updated it, so it should be the same.
Yeah, maybe it is.
Because I thought I sent it that same day.
The date on here shows seventeenth, but so far, I'm seeing everything the same for ending and beginning fund balances. So it'd be the same fund balance worksheet that we had in our folder, which would roughly be, uh, ending fund balance of one point nine million for general basic. Um, one point two five for general supplemental. Uh, rural would be two point eight, so there, I can, that's the most recent sheet.
Josh, I, I didn't quite understand what you said there. You said something sustainable, unsustainable. You made a statement, I guess I, would you please repeat that?
Um, I think the reason why we're looking for such big cuts is that, you know, in the near future, the next, you know, budget years, if we don't have the spending we would do, um, it could end up being coming unsustainable and eventually get down far enough to where we have to significantly raise to, to keep it funded.
Significantly raise what?
Taxes.
You raise taxes, there's more and more people that can't pay them. Saying you've got more debt on your book.
If, if you're talking.
You're not gonna gain anything.
If you're talking raising taxes on general and rural, we're, we were limited by House File seven eighteen, rural specifically, I laid that out yesterday. Um, raising taxes wasn't even an option for those two funds.
True.
Above what was in those limits.
So if things are. My name's Doug Miller, I'm the county engineer. If things are unsustainable and you cannot raise taxes, what are other options?
Cutting expenditures.
Cutting expenditures?
Or cutting services.
And, yes, so, cutting expenditures means you've gotta cut services. So what services are you, are you going to give anybody what is priority and what is not priority for service that Kasuth County provides? The services that the county provides? Is there gonna be any direction from the board?
There has to be.
Yeah. When will it be coming, I guess? That's what I'm asking. We have three weeks of the time, four weeks of.
You're gonna prioritize ambulance as a number one priority for a service? So we have a countywide ambulance now that.
We're at that top, you need to visit with the board, man.
Maureen.
I have a quick question, and I, I actually have been wondering this since we found out, you know, um, at a, at the eleventh hour. Um, what about the excise tax? We worked on the transmission lines with all of the utilities. We worked with all of the wind turbine companies. And we had, that was a directive we got from the Board of Supervisors. And it was set. And I, I have not looked into this yet, but I would like to. That we were going to get a substantial amount of excise tax for Kasuth County. Same thing that's happening over in Palo Alto County right now. My question is, how much excise tax do we get back into the county now? And I know, I know that the rollback probably has impacted that. But overall, we should have had a substantial amount. That is what was told me when I was at the conference last week. That they pay a substantial amount to Kasuth County. So I guess my question is, is that some place that for these needed services, is, is that an area? I, I don't know how you allocate all of that. Because I'm not, I don't know your full budget. I don't work with your full budget, but that's just a question as a citizen and knowing that we worked on this. And one of the goals was, is that for Kasuth County, that was supposed to be a property tax, really. Correct? Roger, Jeff?
Yes, it was.
It was until they changed, started rolling everything back and making changes to it.
So then substantially, how much have we lost? I mean, it'd be nice to do a comparable and do a statistical analysis on that to actually see and then know what is our projection? And then do a projection from, you know, how much would it be? Is it twenty percent that would increase year by year? You know, you can look at it and, and do an estimate on.
Maureen, I, so I got the same numbers, the whole board and everyone in the public has on the revenues detail page. Um, line number eleven, which is utility tax replacement and excise taxes, general basic gets two hundred and eighty-five thousand. General supplemental gets a hundred and thirty thousand. Rural services gets a hundred and twenty thousand. I'm rounding, you guys all have the numbers there. Other is sixty-one, so that brings a total for the fiscal year twenty-five budget to just shy of six hundred thousand dollars. And, I mean, if you look at our actual for twenty-two, twenty-three, that's, uh, five hundred and thirty-two thousand. So it is, it has gone up a little bit, but I don't have older data than that at my fingertips right now. Um.
And Maureen, the Assessors Office has a breakdown of, um, the rollbacks and how it's gonna affect the county over the next several years. So if you've talked to Brandon in the Assessors Office, he can get you that.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to do an analysis of that and do a projection. I guess that's one thing that it, it might be.
And that was.
For the budget.
Yeah, he, he has the breakdown here. We're not getting a lot yet.
Okay.
So right now, um, I guess I, whichever one of these I could use as an example, but the Kasuth Wind Farm, which was next era in year two, which is actually the first year where five percent comes online, their actual property taxes are about twenty-seven hundred dollars, and then that splits out every different direction, so.
That's a real decrease. Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Chris? Chris, can I send a meeting with you next week and sit down with Brandon and you? Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that per turbine or was that for?
Per turbine. Yep. Oh, Nick.
Got it. So you're talking about raising taxes and things not being sustainable. But our cost of goods are going up ten, fifteen percent every year. I mean, how far are we gonna let everything fall apart before we decide we gotta fix this in a cohesive manner?
So the, the point I was trying to make, and I believe I made it multiple times yesterday, is we didn't have that option on rural. We could, we had a limit of thirty thousand dollars we could raise. Whether we liked to or not, that's not a choice. House File seven eighteen laid out limits. I, I don't have a different way to explain it than that.
Well, I'm talking all everybody's budget here. The whole county, everything's going up, ambulance discussion more. Um, at some point, order to even have help, you're gonna have to get raises or you're not gonna have any help. Um, so not raising taxes isn't an option either, correct?
We're still looking at a five, six percent increase in property taxes this year for an increase. Oh, yep, Amber.
Um, you know, in looking at the budget, I'm on service area zero, looking at, um, the ending fund balances as of June thirtieth, which would be twenty twenty-five. I, I guess I'm, I'm extremely concerned about secondary roads. How? How can secondary roads function on an ending fund balance of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? What are you going to do in July, August, and September of two thousand and twenty-five to pay those bills? And why is it this low? Twenty-five percent is the benchmark. Every year that the board is doing the budget, they should be looking at that. Why is that fund balance cut so low? I think there are vital aspects of our budget that are being knocked down. And I don't ever hear a good reason from anyone as to why this is happening. I, you know, I'm sorry, yes, I was the Kasuth County Auditor at one time, so I do know the budget a little bit differently than most people. Why is this happening? Why? Why are we cutting things? Why are we to the point where we are not giving our employees raises and we are taking away their health insurance? We are knocking a fund down that is to take care of our roads? Down so far that how, how are they going to function? I, I can, I cannot tell you how upset I am over this budget and why it is in this condition that it is in. I, I don't. I cannot see any good reason for it. Can any of you tell me why this is happening? Can you give people a reason? How, how is secondary road gonna operate even a month? Let alone three months before property taxes come in that year? We cannot, when we are working on budgets, we can't just look at today and, and right now. You've gotta look at the sustainability of the changes that are being made. I don't see that here in this budget. A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars when twenty-five percent? Secondary roads should have three million dollars in there. Those decisions are being made by the board.
Well, it just, it's a can have both ways. You need to raise taxes fifteen, twenty percent, or you, or you can drop expenses. Expenses are going up faster than revenue.
This, this didn't happen overnight, though.
It's been happening for.
A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? When? When has that fund ever, I mean, that fund is in serious trouble. When has it ever been that low? And why is it that low? Why?
Well, as Kyle, you know, you had, uh, said earlier, the road basic, we could only increase thirty thousand dollars. That was the max.
That's not answering my question.
I, I, I'll address one piece briefly. We, in our conversations about the projected ending fund balances, what is in the budget is not what we are actually planning on ending with. Doug has said this as well, his target is ending with a two million dollar fund balance.
What, what date? This fiscal year?
The end of this fiscal year, yes.
Like, which, isn't that built into this? Budget, budget presentation?
Part of that, but that's not the numbers that are in there. If we, if we don't spend all of what's in this year's budget, we will have that in fund balance.
Right, but when you're working on the budget, you're not working on, okay, well, what if? You're working on, this is the worst-case scenario, and you need to base your budget on that worst-case scenario. That's not being done. This is, this is that. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Sure, what, what happened on March, March sixth of twenty twenty-three, approximately a year ago? I was attending a conference in Ames, Iowa, and the board chose to reduce property tax for rural. And all of a sudden just took and amended the budget that was submitted by the county engineer a year ago. And what that had led to then is the expenditures that they budgeted for had to be paid for out of bounds. And again, this year, you're taking bounds. You're correct, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on paper in the bounds. But it's because of action the board took a year ago. Without any advice from the county engineer.
Okay.
March sixth.
What are you gonna do? How are you gonna pay the bills? July, August, and September? Is any thought ever made to the future when you're doing your budget? That's all I gotta ask, because to me, it does not appear that it is.
What you're wanting to reduce is the road department by forty percent, correct? The operators, that's your goal, pal? That's the numbers you put out.
When did I put out those numbers?
You said you wanted to decrease or fire the road department by ten or twelve employees, the operators?
I don't believe I said that in the meeting.
You said more along, you wanted to reduce staff by ten or twelve people in that department on record. I can come back and find that for you.
Um, I, there have been comments made in this boardroom about certain numbers of employees being cut. I don't believe I have said that.
Well, I think you did in the meeting, the last, lovely meeting, the last section of that, you were talking to Doug about having to reduce labor in order to meet a million dollars, considering we're short of a million. That was your comment. So I don't believe if you cut your labor force by forty percent, that these people are gonna have to stay broke. No answer, bro.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question, a proactive question. Um, have any of you personally contacted our state legislature or our governor about the decisions that have been made that are horribly impacting our counties? Have any of you contacted them and shared with them?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Keep doing it, please.
We're, we're not getting any response.
Yeah, well, I'm surprised, but don't give up, we know how it feels. So, you know, we do too, we contact us, uh, on your behalf as well. We need you. We're not your enemy, we're your allies. We want to work with you.
The only, only way the state will change is if there's hurt put out on the public, that's stat act.
It's coming. We're both people out. At the state level.
Bingo.
We're going to.
Bingo.
In the fund history for the twenty twenty-two ending and twenty twenty-three ending, I see that there's, it's in the red, both years. So you guys have been aware that there's been a loss, well, it's like there's been more than revenue for a while. I know some of you are newer on the board, but have you been proactive before this year when you start discussing the cuts that need to be made? They've got the general balance without the ARPA. That's a look now.
So this, this, uh, fund history comparison is a new chart that was recently put together. I think ARPA was one of the factors that caused a little bit of confusion with where our fund balances sat.
Because somebody needs to be accountable for that. That's why we have people in different positions. I, I mean, I do taxes, I gotta be accountable for my work. So someone has to be accountable for why we didn't know that we were in the, I guess, in the red. We're accounting, we're not a business, we, we provide services. I'm assuming you guys didn't know they were in the red when you started. When were you guys made aware?
We're not, we're not in the red. They're not actually in the red, but it's showing us they had more expenses than revenue, like the fund is in the red, but I see what you're saying, but just.
We gotta have, you always gotta have, you know, a balance for the unknown, for emergencies. There, I mean, the world is crazy. We had the Raychows knock hit us, but that happened here, we gotta have money there if something happened, because that'd be a county expense, for sure. Um, but if our expenses are more than our revenue, we obviously should have known sooner than all of a sudden right now.
Well, I think the general, um, from, for me personally, going forward, I understand far more what the issues in Kasuth County are, um, and have a better plan going forward as far as how to address these things in the coming year. And, uh, just, just an understanding of working to the budget and, and all that, and that's definitely something that as the year goes on, going to be visiting with, with other county supervisors, with other departments within Kasuth County, uh, to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I, I wanna see to it that it doesn't. And I, I think things will, will get better and, you know, it's we're, we are. we're, we are where we're at today, but, uh, I don't, I don't plan to see this happen again. That's, but that, that's just me. So.
So Carter, like the road department, like she mentioned the ratio or something?
Yep.
So in our department or the road department, that would be a very serious hit. Are we liquid enough for that for the next two years? Something catastrophic happened or what happens if we don't have the funds for that?
That's something we need to consider.
Any other comments from the public? For this public hearing? Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing. Okay, second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath? Jerks? Whacktor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Next up on our agenda is discussion decision adoption of fiscal year twenty-five budget and certification of taxes by resolution number zero four twenty-three twenty-four zero two. Do you guys hear the resolution number or do you, okay. Next up on our agenda is, um, the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five budget and certification of taxes by resolution. And that resolution number is zero four twenty-three twenty-four zero two. Our next agenda item. Is there any discussion from the board?
If, if this budget were not adopted, it would revert to the previous year's budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
We'd be disastrous.
Yes.
I just wanna make that clear. Couldn't operate.
I would entertain a motion if there is no comments from the board. Motion by Plath for a second.
Second.
Second by Jerks. Any further discussion?
Well, just keeping my, you talked about, we'll, we've got things to work on and we'll continue to work this. Budgets are living. That, you know, we'll keep working on it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll get through it.
Any other comments?
I don't think anyone's happy with the, with this, our finished project.
Any other comments from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacktor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
No. Motion carried four to one. Next, next up on our agenda.
Thank you for being here.
Thank y'all for coming in. Next on our agenda is approval of public purposes for economic development expenditures by resolution number. What's that? Four twenty-three twenty-four oh three. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, thank you. Third second.
I just wanna say as an ordained minister, just ask yourselves one question. What would Jesus do in this situation like this? That's the most important. That's more important than anything we talk about. What would Jesus do, just considering?
Was that Roger that?
Yeah, motion. You got that. Okay. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Roll call vote, please.
Plath? Jerks?
Yes.
Whacktor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yeah.
Stacker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Handwritten claim. For postmaster. Is there any, that's in our packet? Is there any questions on that? I would entertain a motion to approve the handwritten claim. Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is the quarterly reports for auditor, recorder, sheriff, and veterans affairs. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Yeah, let's, let's sign this and take a ten-minute break here. Get paperwork done. Just under five.
Yeah, you're just like that when you're adjusting the screen.
All right, you guys got all those. Putting ten, ten feedback?
Yep.
Almost there. Ten minutes or so.
I need ten minutes to get all my stuff spread out.
Thanks. I think those are, I think those are Donna's papers, Phil, which shall be the.
She on the agenda, she is.
Avisis, Avisis Plan and Walmart will have right before you, but you're, you're fine. I don't.
I just, but there are a lot of people here.
See you, Brian.
See you.
See you.
Why did I take yours?
Oh, no, that was copy to me and. I just had it on the computer.
Of course, time is what I got.
Two minutes.
Five, five or less.
Really?
I'm kidding. I mean, a lot of it is yours until we get down to issue.
Yeah.
Or discussions.
I climbed it on there, but I'm trying to keep my updates short.
Half hour.
I didn't know if I was on a time crunch with.
One or what? I forgot my paper. I signed it and didn't bring it. He sent me a letter.
Oh, yeah. Okay. The, I, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I got mine. I haven't looked it up yet. Did yours say Carter?
It's pretty.
Huh? No, no?
Did yours say Carter? Yours sure said Carter. Yours should have said Josh. Did it say yours said Josh?
Well, it's, it was mailed to me, but then it said, dear Josh.
It's all the letter I get up to, but the, but your form says.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, I have a little fragment.
That's okay.
I said, I.
No. I'm just here for health and shit, so I don't know. I don't know how long it's gonna take.
You just fill out a form and then a second one. So you don't have to fill it all out or say, so it's pretty.
They just don't really need our permission for identification to show that we send.
Go on those first.
Okay.
This is what I hear. Okay.
Yeah, just to.
I'm in here. I did it. Didn't get very far. Yeah, I did.
So how are you doing?
I'm okay. I was sorry.
Paul Riley? Yeah.
Now we can look to the future or?
Does, is he like behind like where? Okay, he's in that, yeah. Does, does he teach? Is that different?
Me. Say me.
Well, I'm not, I, I have one her motherhood. Kurt's got the one job.
But you get, you can tweet. There's some people that do pretty well or get, get the eight. Yeah. You gotta get in automobiles or like, you don't wanna have a sedan necessarily. Yeah.
You gotta get her out. Never get her out.
Oh, yeah. Including AMU?
No.
No, this is just city. What is that? Is it the water treatment facility or sanitary suit? Yeah, I'm very shy outside. There's a, I know O C O is looking in their sanitary system.
Thinking it was gonna be a lot cooler in the day than yesterday.
Converting it into, the sanitary will be filtered and treated enough that it'll be put back in the water system, which would be like the second or third in the United States to do that.
What's up Thursday's meeting?
It's very expensive to operate.
Friday, it looks like it's raining all day.
I don't know if town side could do it.
We're hoping to get some street built plans.
O C O, if you still need outside, we'll work, we'll sign, we'll...
Better do it in the next three days, today on your own, Thursday.
You know, one time when I was like, I'd be mad, I'll get you on your tires. You guys are trying to watch my dog. Right, no? I'm gonna go fishing.
So do I. How you got smart in there?
I didn't take them off.
It don't matter what you do, it's true.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. It's time to change your tune though, for the next half hour and just be happy with someone. Yeah, be in agreement, yeah.
Yeah, Phil wants everyone happy now.
And then at eleven o'clock, you go back normal. Phil's got such a tough, tough life, a tough job, and we just need a little supervisor support today and like, you know. Oh, God, I think about that every day. Oh, I think most is annoying. So, I haven't, I brought the security guard. I wondered about that, thank you, right, that's two days in a row about that. What could be worse?
That's right. Put them in your glasses.
Sit on this side, so I don't poke you. Sign on there.
I wanna know about Mendelhoff.
What do I know? I know everything.
Because we did the whole terminal part, but I don't know, I, is that just non, you know?
So, the idea of how this was started was?
Just transport.
Yeah.
One of our people were called.
Now, can it evolve in there, we got the possibility, but then you don't have more.
It's the first time I've ever seen it.
So, what, the original? Costs us for name, those paying up.
Yeah, 'cause it's entered into by the sooth counter.
Cause they're so dangerous. Still, yeah, thank you, it's not like, you just said the other day, where it's available, but she said they can get that.
Well, now we got board members back here. All right. Donna and...
You ready?
Yep, we're...
Okay.
Avisis and Walmart.
Can sit the cushy chair in the table anymore?
We'll bring the cushy chair back.
That's good, good. Okay, here to kind of sign the final renewal rates and programs for the, okay, open enrollment period. Um, Avisis, I know we talked last week about looking at going from L three to L seven. And I think I learned this from last year, and I didn't think about it when I was here last week, so I called around to some of our vision providers. They already offer above what is standard progressive lenses, they do a premium, so and I don't think going up to that rate change would really benefit us. So, that's rational for that. So, I guess I'm asking for a recommendation and the chair to sign the Avisis plan that will be in effect until June thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
What, the L three option?
Yeah, I kinda gave them with a zero five one, three zero, um, Z thirteen is the, the plan number.
That's the L three?
It's L three, and I quit, I, yeah, I three, L three.
So, do our...
Maybe I need to get my progressive lenses updated.
So, it's staying on the L three, our prices are actually going down a little bit?
No, well, they are.
Cause our current rates...
They might be a few cents, you're correct.
Yeah, like eleven ninety-three versus eleven twenty-one, and then the last one thirty-two, eleven versus thirty and eighteen cents, so...
Yep, they are a little bit, yep, they're a little bit different.
Okay.
You wanna vote on separately? Yes?
For, yeah, just Avisis first.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
There'd be a motion to approve. L three, okay.
And sign.
And, and sign and everything? Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Do you wanna wait, or do you wanna, I need to give it to you? You can probably just sign and...
Yeah, I'll talk.
You can sign and listen. Okay, so the next item is the account information and binder agreement with Walmart. Um, recommending that that be signed and that we set open enrollment on May second through May thirteenth. We will have the open enrollment information day on May second. Um, I added the secondary roads in, so that we would have a primarily for them to come at a seven A M. session, a nine A M. session, a one P M. session, and then a five P M. session for people that work shifts. It is recommended that that be approved and signed by the chair.
Any questions? Comments from the board? Or is, I would entertain a motion to sign the binder agreement and everything with Walmart?
And just set the open enrollment day.
And set open enrollment. Okay.
Confirm that?
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Then the last thing, um, just, I guess, an acknowledgement that I will also be sending in the, the final rate signature page, and historically I've done that, and then the Cobra addendum, um, and the M, I'm gonna struggle with this, MPS, um, which is just basically identifying what our size of our, our plan is.
All right, just the one?
Yep, just the one.
All right.
Do you guys wanna, I mean, do you just wanna give me acknowledgement, or do you wanna make a motion that I, I forward the rest of those documents?
Nah, just send them, that's fine.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Phil.
Um, good morning.
Morning.
Quick update, um, hasn't been a little long since I was here. We did bump up, put my update in there this week, since I did have some stuff on the agenda, but, um, just a quick update. The only thing on transfers that changes, I do have, um, March numbers now, in March we had eighteen transfers. Our current revenue data of transfers is twenty-nine thousand, we budgeted forty thousand, so, um, we're gonna end the year a little short on that number than what we projected in the budget, and that is mainly due to the lack of beds, and a lot of transfers didn't go because there weren't available beds to transfer people, so that's the only reason, that's the main reason why our transfer numbers is down, it has nothing to do with anything else other than availability to take people. So, we did have advisory council, we did meet on April eighth. We did discuss purchasing, um, some different items, equipment, also a new ambulance. We reviewed our monthly reports. Uh, we did a budget review for both current fiscal year and next fiscal year, and the status of closing down Swing City accounts and Elgona accounts. Uh, we did make one deposit from the city of Elgona, the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and went into our account. Uh, that was made, we left them approximately twenty thousand dollars. Uh, back, Swing City's sitting on approximately fifty thousand dollars yet. And we're working on getting that closed out. The reason we left that money there is in case we have unexpected expenses that come up between now and the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll, we'll get that closed out. Uh, staffing, currently we still have one position open. Um, I recently did hire a new paramedic, uh, she's gonna start part-time, hopefully soon. So, that'll give us one more, she wants to work out approximately one to two days a week. Uh, so that'll be no benefits with that position, but we're gonna pick up a couple of days with the paramedic per week, uh, with her coming in, so hopefully that will evolve into a full-time position, but she wanted to start out at, at that. Current CPR classes, uh, we recently taught a class with Conservation Department, and we're, we're doing Cortiva and A G P right now. I'll get them finished up probably next week. A couple of our medics and myself went up to North Union School, and we did participate in their career day on April fifth. We had good response from that. And then coming up on May twenty-first, we are doing the Elgona High School on May turn. Last year we did a mock disaster at the fairgrounds, we're planning on doing that again, we had a good response. Sounds like we have more kids signed up this year than we did last year, because we actually had an event that they participated in, so I don't know, we haven't started planning that yet, but maybe we'll even get some law enforcement involved in that this year and keep the kids' interest up. I did get on the ISAC conference on a Friday, presented EMS essential service, um, back on March fifteenth. That was well, well-accepted, I've had a lot of emails since then from different supervisors around the state asking for information and just, just good positive feedback, so that went well. One of the guys from, um, I don't even remember what county he's from, he passed their essential service at the same time we did. So, the two of us have been kind of working on putting together a state group, cause EMS has never really had a state organization, we've always, every county or every service has done their own thing, and nobody, there's really not been much collaboration between the different services, so we, we've been working on trying to set up the state group. We're gonna have our first meeting coming up here April twenty-ninth. Kind of a kickoff meeting to see where this goes, try to, try to come up with ways that we can work together better in the state to support EMS, so hopefully going down to that on the twenty-ninth of, of April. Uh, our service area meets still attend that, that's monthly on Wednesdays, um, that's where we get some of our grant money from the state. And we use our grant money from that portion strictly goes one hundred percent towards education. And it goes towards new education first. Uh, speaking of that, we just finished up that E M T. class with nine students, that ended on April eighteenth, they're gonna be testing here in May, so we'll see what happens with, with that class. Yeah, we did that actually right here in town at the, at the complex at the train center. That was two nights a week since last fall. So, May, May, I think it's fifteenth, they, they take their first part of their test, and then they take the rhythm after that, so that's wrapping up. Working on Public Safety Night Out, it's gonna be held this fall. I don't remember the exact date, but it's in September, so we might move to the fairgrounds this year. Kind of looking at the area where we can, where we set up the best, so working on that, EMS financials, we're still looking good EMS-wise, uh, we've continued to remain under budget. Um, working hard to get this initial fund balance carryover for next year. Means we should just start it. And then the last thing I have on my list here is my office move is complete, I'm not completely unpacked, but I'm completely there. I still have a trailer full of boxes, but we'll, we'll get there. The only question I have left is the ME stuff. I still have the ME files across the street. There's four file cabinets of ME stuff. All the supplies for ME are at the building, but I got four file cabinets of records that are locked and secured over at that building. I do not have room for those files out to my EMS office. So, just something to think about in the future. You know, if you guys do something different, that building over there, we need to make sure we have a place for those files to go as well. Um, budget numbers, we're gonna go over that real quick before we dive into my other stuff, it just kind of solidifies what I'm doing. And these are all effective April first, this is the same information I presented to the advisory council. So, we do have a payroll that's come out since then, this is effective April first. Revenues, the first line is projected and the second line is actual. Um, so levy revenue, we projected one point one nine three. And our receipts today to April first were one point one six eight. Uh, so we're, we're close on there, about twenty-five thousand left to receive yet. Call revenue, uh, we projected five hundred thousand, we received two seventy-seven. I just looked at my account this morning, there's a hundred thousand dollars that has been deposited in my account again this month of April. So, that's gonna get that up to three seventy-seven, then we still have, um, May and June to come, so I think we're gonna be really, really close on that number. That was a hard number to project with the delay in getting billing revenue coming in, I, I still have a I'm still working with railroad and a couple other things to get those finished up. And some of that stuff since the beginning of the year, so Elgona, the startup cost, we projected a hundred and seventy-five thousand, as I stated, we received a hundred and thirty. There's still about seventy thousand on the, on the books sent in there to come over yet, so, uh, we should, we should be above on that number. The other line there is pretty much was the, um, K R C. money, and you can see we're about thirty thousand behind on that. Uh, so actuals to date is one point six billion, our budget is one point nine. Short to date is three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Uh, total expenses to date, effective April first was what, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine thirty-seven. Um, our current fund balance is seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight sixty-one, which includes a hundred and sixty thousand for ambulance purchase, so a hundred and sixty thousand is not spent, that was what we presented to the public, that we were gonna save a hundred and sixty thousand dollars every year back as a fund balance to go towards future ambulance purchases, so we're trying to figure out how to pay for it in the future, we have the money sitting there, so um, that, that's, that includes that number. Non-projected remaining expenses is four hundred and fifty thousand. I projected revenue at that time of two hundred thousand, as I just stated, we already have a hundred thousand set in the bank account, so I'm probably, probably pretty low on, on that number, probably gonna be closer to meeting that three twenty-one, but just using that two hundred revenue, four hundred and fifty expenses, my projected fund balance at the end of the year will be five hundred thirteen thousand, eight sixty-one, which includes the ambulance purchase and the contingency that we presented to the public as well. We presented the hundred and fifty thousand towards an ambulance and the ten, and the hundred thousand as a contingency carryover. So, if you subtract those two numbers out of that five hundred thirteen thousand, we're two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand additional fund balance than what we had projected, so but as far as fund balance available at the end of the fiscal year, we should be a little over half a million dollars in fund balance. But as far as fund balance available at the end of the fiscal year, we should be a little over half a million dollars in fund balance. Questions on my budget? So when we started this year, if you remember, we did that inter-fund loan to get us started. With the numbers looking where they are right now, we're nine and a half months in, so I cannot foresee any big changes in these numbers. And I'm confident that I'm estimating these low, especially my revenue. We shouldn't have to worry about an inter-fund loan next year. We should be able to sustain on our own. Another advantage of next year is we will receive revenue in July, where this year we did not receive revenue for three months. Do you remember back? So.
Call, call revenue?
Call revenue, correct. So we won't receive any tax money until October, but we receive call revenue. Right away versus this year, we didn't receive any call revenue. So. Our fund balance is looking good. Our, our budget's looking very, very, very good right now. So questions on anything on that, on the update? Uh, the next item on the agenda I had was approved pay increase for Matt Taylor. Matt was a new hire we hired a few months ago. He had finished his paramedic school. If you remember, we hired him. He did pass his exam. He is all officially a paramedic now, so we're working to get him, him up to speed. He's being our new paramedic in the county. Uh, with the new certification level, that does come with a pay change based on our current wage scale, which will move him from his current pay of twenty-one dollars an hour to twenty-four dollars and fifty cents per hour. And I would like to make that effective. Our pay period begins Sunday, which is April what, twenty-first? So we just make it effective at the beginning of this pay period. He actually received his certification. I guess I didn't write down exactly. About a week ago. He does results a week ago. So.
I was gonna say it expires three thirty-one. So.
Probably the end of the month.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was probably end of the month, I would guess.
Yeah, you called me on a Saturday morning at seven o'clock. I got my results. So. So I guess we need a motion to go ahead and approve that. So.
Okay, motion by Roger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Phil on this? All those in favor, say aye.
All aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Unanimous. All right. Next up is ambulance purchase. Phil?
So as you all know, we got way behind on updating equipment over the past few years. The downside to buying an ambulance is we're, we're two years out. So this ambulance we're, we're looking at today should be delivered spring of twenty twenty-six. We will not be upfronting any money on this ambulance. It will all be due upon delivery. So I'm not asking to spend the money. I'm asking to, now to make the purchase.
Place the order.
To place the order, to lock in the bid. We did discuss this at our advisory council meeting. We did open the bids at that meeting. I had three bids received to do an ambulance purchase bid. It's actually a three-ring binder about this thing that we send out with our specs, what we want from the companies. They send back a three-ring binder. And then I had them send the, the bid, the actual bid price in a, in a sealed envelope. So we did open those at the advisory council meeting. Two of the bids are very close. The two bids that are very close is companies that we've actually worked with in the past. Buy trucks from them in the past. The fact is, the two bids are about eighty dollars difference on a two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar truck. After reviewing the specs, the one that's more expensive was actually a twenty twenty-five chassis. And the one that was less expensive was a twenty twenty-six chassis. So the advisory council recommended to purchase the one that's, it's the cheapest bid, plus it's a year-new chassis. A year newer chassis. So it'll be a twenty twenty-six truck. And the one truck that we do have that we did receive, we were spending around six to seven thousand dollars a month, just trying to maintain the trucks we have. Since we got the new truck, we've cut that amount significantly. So it has helped getting that truck. We still have three trucks in our fleet that are ten to twenty years old that all have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles. That doesn't count for runtime when we're setting out a residence. When we stop at a residence and we leave the truck run with the lights on, it kicks into a high idle. So we don't run our batteries down. So those trucks, that doesn't add in anything for idle time. That's just actual miles covered. So. We do have a couple of trucks that we're still need to, to work on replacing in the future, but this, this will help us get towards that goal.
Any questions from the board?
Need to know the company and the amount.
Phil, do you have the company name and the dollar amount?
Yeah, that's true. Feld Fire.
Feld Fire, F E L D, F I R E. And do you have the exact dollar amount?
I do. Two ninety-one, eighty fifty-six.
Is there any change on that? Dollar or cents?
I guess, I guess if we can, can we approve that up to that amount? In case we make some changes in the bill of price, or does it not matter if we lower the price?
If it's lower than what's approved, I think it should be.
Set to be firm, firm price?
Yes, that's a bid price. So that's, that will be locked in for twenty twenty-six.
You got all the info you need? Perfect. And entertain a motion to approve? You have motions? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Purchase of other EMS equipment.
So we're looking at completing a couple of projects. We started through ARPA funds. One project we started through ARPA funds, which was a great, great benefit for the county, was our, our transport ventilators. It was a big thing through COVID for, for transporting ventilated patients. We still use those a fair amount today. Another advantage to those machines is we, um, we can provide care in the field with those versus just transporting people on ventilator. They do bypass, they do CPAP, um, they do other respiratory treatment care for our patients. When we did that, we bought two. Our intent, our intent was through the ARPA funds, we paid for two of those ventilators. Our intent with those machines was to have one available for transfers and one available for nine-one-one calls. And that's how they're being utilized today. The disadvantage is when we did that project, we did not consider the North Hub. We just considered having the two here. Uh, we'd like to put one machine up in the North Station so that we have the same, same equipment, same patient care in the whole county versus the southern half has this, the northern half has that. I was able to work with the manufacturer to purchase a recertified machine. Uh, the cost of that machine is thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. When we did that project through ARPA, um, the machines were around twenty thousand dollars a piece. So we can save about sixty-six hundred. They're recertified from the manufacturer. They do carry a manufacturer warranty.
How long does that warranty last on the?
One year.
One year?
Then they, then we put them on our preventative maintenance program and they come around and service those annually. We used to do a preventative maintenance program, each piece of equipment with that particular company. I did contract now with the company that does preventative maintenance on our equipment, which is a one-stop shop. And cut our preventative maintenance approximately twelve thousand dollars from what we were paying individually. Our total cost this year for preventative, our equipment was about seven grand. We would have paid about twenty. So we made a significant decrease in the cost of that.
Did they come here to do that or?
Yes, they, I mean, they come here.
Yep, that's definitely a good change.
The only downside to it is, for example, our Zoll monitors. If there's something that they can't repair on site and has to be sent in, that's going to the company. But the advantage is, even if we were with Zoll, they'd still have to send it to the company. This company that we hired for PM actually gives us a loner machine where Zoll did not have.
Yeah, that's good.
So. We actually did have to send one of our six in for an update that he was unable to do. And they did give us a loner to use one of the machines in service for, for no cost. So.
Yeah, and that's valuable, right?
So far, it's working out real well, that change we made, both financially and functionally, yeah.
Service-wise too.
Yep.
Doesn't force you to take a track down.
Then the other project we started was, uh, the state, the state of Iowa's, we have an inspection, we have inspection coming up May first. So I'm, tomorrow is one week away from our state inspection coming in there. So we'll be doing inspection here in Elgona, one in Sway City, then we'll also be doing one in Whitmore. So that's our three inspections we have coming up this year. One big thing the state's pushing really hard on is everything that's in the back of the ambulance has to be secured. It has to be crash-rated. So that if we're in an accident, there's not equipment that's lined around that it can hurt either the providers or the patients. So we started this project with a new truck, with the one new truck that we had. It's called a tech mount system. It's a system that is crash-rated, that actually locks our equipment and you push a button and it locks comes out. It takes three pieces of equipment per truck. Because we have the ventilator, we have the, um, the monitor that lock into this equipment. And it mounts on the cot or mounts on either one of the two cabinets. So there's three mounts, there's three locations and two pieces of equipment can be mounted in a truck. The downside is everything we do medically is expensive. Um, the cost to do three additional trucks, so have three trucks fully functioning with the new system is eighteen thousand dollars. The only truck that would not be equipped is the one that we just approved to come in twenty twenty-six. We'd have to equip that truck in twenty twenty-six. After that, we'd be able to move the equipment from truck to truck as we replace the trucks. So it would not be an ongoing cost expense eventually, once we get it all in place. So that's the two big pieces of equipment I'd like to purchase. That is included in my budget numbers of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not anything additional than what I did in the budget.
That tech mount system, is that something that when that new ambulance is getting built, that they could potentially put that in for us or?
They can, but.
Or will it end up costing?
It's pretty easy to install.
Okay.
And the cost of installing that stuff, plus me shipping, shipping the parts to them.
Okay. I didn't know if that was something that they could include on when they're.
Because the one, the one mount actually goes on the cot itself. So they would have to, we can do that here ourselves cheaper than trying to coordinate with them doing that stuff.
And it's those two pieces you're looking for?
Yeah, we got some other small stuff we're looking at.
Yep.
I did the inventory yesterday. Our, our lithium batteries that we have in our portable equipment. We have fifty-two lithium batteries throughout our various pieces of equipment in both Elgona and Sway City. The batteries are anywhere from nine hundred and fifty to twelve hundred bucks a piece. So I'm like cringing yesterday, like I have fifty-two thousand dollars in batteries that I'm gonna have to shelf life. So we're working on the best way to rotate these batteries and the best way to charge these batteries. So we can make sure we get the best life out of these batteries because a thousand bucks a piece, I don't wanna go replacing a bunch of batteries every year that we don't need to replace. So we may end up buying a couple of batteries and a couple of battery chargers just to get a proper rotation in place to get the best life out of those lithium batteries. So little things like that we may be looking at, but I've included that in that projected expenses. So I didn't, I think we're safe on that, that number. That it won't go up even during these projects. Unless we have a major truck breakdown.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve these equipment purchases. I, yeah, I believe it's all, there's, it's not ARPA for any of this stuff.
Correct.
It's all regular budget.
Correct.
What he was saying was those ventilators originally were.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but the first ones were.
Just needed to clarify.
Yep. I would move to approve the equipment purchases for EMS. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. All right.
Mental health transport. This is a project we've been working on for a while. I'm hoping we can get this thing wrapped up eventually. I guess the big thing the board needs to know on this mental health, so this is a project that we started. Donnie Losz was kind of the one behind us when we started this. He was on the Mental Health Care Connections Board. Uh, that extra funding to, to, that they needed dispersed at the end of that fiscal year. And we did part of, towards a use of a vehicle and, and the language within the, the grant itself was that we would provide mental health transport for the hospital. So I've been working with the hospital on that, how we're gonna make this work. The hospital currently uses, um, I would, uh, Central Iowa Detention. They come up with a cage car and do, um, some of their transports. The problem with Central Iowa Transport is a lot of the times, it's a six-hour delay to get somebody out of their ER or out of their hospital room before they're able to come and pick up that patient. So this is kind of, uh, our, our idea behind this is to speed up that process for the hospital and help them empty their beds, empty their ER so they can continue patient care from there. What we did is we went off of Central Iowa Detention's contract and we reworded that contract into language uh, between Cassup County and Cassup Regional Health Center. I have given this contract to Todd. He has reviewed it. I also sent this contract to the insurance company lawyers. They have reviewed it. Everybody's okay with the language within the contract. Talking to the insurance company, um, they just actually got back to me this morning. We're looking at a fifty percent increase in our insurance rate on that one vehicle. So I asked them to clarify what fifty percent increase is on that one vehicle, whether that is just liability or if it's on the total cost of that insurance premium for that vehicle. Which I got, we don't know. So I'm waiting to hear back on that. Either way, we're gonna look at the cost. And if there's a cost that exceeds what we're projecting charging the hospital, we're gonna have to just include that into the contract change because we don't wanna lose money doing this. Idea is, hopefully we can make a little bit of money doing it, but the way the contract's written, probably it's gonna be closer to a break-even thing. We did look at, I think when I worked on numbers, we looked at sixty-five cents per mile as a, as a reimbursement rate plus time for the person that's, that's taking the transport. And this kind of rough figured word, we pretty much go in Iowa and took the differences between, um, those times and come up with a rate. Plus it pretty much coincided with what Central Iowa Detention was charging as well. So that's kind of how the contract was developed and, and how we're going to function. The other side of this is, we cannot operate this mental health transport under Cassup County EMS. It cannot be under EMS protocols. It cannot be under EMS medical direction. Has to be a whole separate entity from Cassup County EMS. Has to be a whole separate entity from Cassup County EMS. Now, it can be run under Cassup County EMS budget. It just can't be run under Cassup County EMS as a EMS system. Okay, does that make sense? As, under the state of Iowa, we cannot run mental health transport as a EMS service. But we can include it under my EMS budget if that's how you guys so choose to run this. To me, it probably do make the most sense. I really don't want to take on another budget or you guys, I'm, so at this point. It's not gonna be an expense. I can't see it being a huge expense. It's gonna be a huge revenue on the other side. So where it really sits, probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference, um, EMS-wise, if we just run it under that. That's been some of the delays of getting this whole thing finished, the whole thing completed, because we can't go under those protocols. They've even come down as far as say, my vehicle cannot say Cassup County EMS on the side. We have to get a magnetic sign to put over top that Cassup County EMS, or we use that vehicle for our mental health transport. So, yeah, it's been a big learning experience. There's been a lot of hoops to jump through. The good news is, the insurance company's approved the contract, so is the county attorney's approved contract. So we should be able to fulfill the grant requirements and, um, start providing some transport. Initially, um, looking at. I've talked to Kendall Powell, says a retired police officer. He does have experience dealing with these type of people. He'd be a good person to, um, to do some of the transports. I've led to doing some of the transports myself. If, if they're stable patients, we're gonna transport them. If they're a danger to themselves, danger to others, how are you gonna follow law enforcement to transport those patients or somebody with more. More experience than what we have to start with. So it's not intended to totally replace Central Iowa detention. It's intended to fill a gap. The other part of the grant that was written talked about how we have dispersed response within the county with that vehicle, both for medical purposes and mental health purposes, so providing that. So that vehicle is equipped as a first response unit with a defibrillator, all the EMS supplies like our ambulances have. So the downside to this, we're gonna have to kind of balance out how we're functioning is, when that vehicle's gone in mental health transport, now we're taking away that, that response here in Cassup County. So it's just some things we're gonna have to look at and work through as, as time goes on, but, um, I guess we're at a point now where we can continue to move forward with this transport and hospital's excited about it. There's times when, what's six, eight, nine hours, they set on somebody before they get them out the door. If we can help do that faster, we, we have benefit for them. And hopefully we make a little money at doing it besides. Questions?
I have concerns about the budget aspect, especially since we're levying for ambulance. I think we need to check with Elizabeth about that.
Whether we have them suffered?
Yeah.
Be good to per, that's, I was thinking about that too.
Yeah, I, I have some concerns.
If there's any, any concern there.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask you one from there?
Just to clarify for you guys, even Central Iowa detention can refuse a patient if they're aggressive or combative. So then we end up transporting, even if it's not a court order, we'll help out when we can. But Norman, we need a court order to transport. So what Phil's talking about, if, you know, if they agree to this contract with the hospital, Central Iowa is not available and you are, as long as it's a patient that meets that criteria, correct?
Correct.
Because if not, then they're gonna be calling us to get a court order in, you know? Does that make sense?
Yep.
This is for non-emergent or non-combative, non-aggressive type patients.
I'm not here for that, but for voluntary? You're talking voluntary transports, not court-committed transports.
If it's court-committed, it involves.
I know, that's what I'm just clarifying. I mean, I wasn't here for that, but volunteer, you're looking at hospitals, looking at voluntary in the hospital currently.
Now, there's some, there's some possible changes coming down the road with the court order ones that if they're stable, they still can go by other means than law enforcement. So where that's added in the whole process, I'm not sure, but I know there's talk on that.
Correct.
And, and even a court order could go by different means because like last week, I served a court order, but the patient was also in a medical emergency, so then they went by ambulance. So it's a bit of a lot on the patient. So where this evolves from here, I mean, it could come down where we could help law enforcement.
Right.
If it's a court order, but it's a safe transport, you know, we could utilize this need versus a deputy.
The verbiage on a court order usually states, Cassup County Sheriff's Office, for by designated.
So that part, I haven't really dove into a lot yet because our original focus was the grant guidelines with, with Cassup Regional Hospital. The last thing we want to do as an EMS service is to take two people out of service and call an ambulance and they can go by car with one person.
Yep. Yeah, I like the principles and everything of it, but probably do need a check on the budget side of things. Make sure we're not gonna have any audit issues there. But, yeah, I mean, if it helps all parties out, that's.
Kind of, it's not like we could add to our current protocols and put a page in there for this and continue on. Oh, no, that's too easy.
One thing that I've noticed with, because we also use central juvenile detention when it's like a trip to Bend or for something that's gonna take an officer off the road for a while or Jalen for a while. I have called like two o'clock in the morning trying to get a transport from Psychon Juvenile Detention, they have like Cassup Regional. And lately, they say, well, my manager's not till five AM, so we can't get an approval yet to five AM. So there's three more hours of that patient sitting, waiting, plus time to get from wherever they're coming from.
I've been told last time, they, they don't leave down there until after seven AM.
Yes, so the wait, I can attest that the wait.
If, if, if that's an issue, talk to me outside on, on that, since I'm on that board.
Sure.
I'll, I'll get more specifics from you and we actually have a meeting there on Friday, so.
I will talk to you then, because that's been a recent thing.
Okay, thanks for that information.
I've heard the same thing from last one.
Did they use gas cards like one degree and they had them spread out there?
Well, yeah, and I think they still do have them spread out location-wise, but if there's. Approval being waited on until someone comes in or whatever. I mean, it's a twenty-four seven facility. I don't.
Yeah.
I don't quite understand that, so I'll have to ask questions.
I'm sure, I'm sure the reason is because there's a lot of EMS services, they're going to the same thing. Even Mason City has it. They don't transport overnight because of the risk, because of the safety, because of the sleep deprivation, everything else. They, they're, these people are, are physically, mentally, are, are medically stable. It doesn't matter if we take them now or if we take them in seven hours. They're gonna be okay. It's just a delayed transport. So why risk putting somebody on the road at two o'clock in the morning? Risk them falling asleep, deer are out, everything else. They're just delaying transport till daylight hours is what they're doing.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think they can justify doing that. Because even the ambulance services have started doing that from the ERs, and I don't know how they justify that, but they're doing it. Daylight hours only. So you don't have a heart attack at midnight. You ain't going to work till daylight. We get, we get calls from Mason City, we get calls from Spencer in the middle of the night, hey, can you come take transport? Of course we don't have it. So we're not looking at doing that, so don't think that we're looking at doing that here, but it is happening.
Okay, well, anyone else on the board have thoughts or? Do you agree with checking with Elizabeth and confirming after that?
I think that'd be the next step, to make sure we don't have any budget issues.
I made two copies of the revised contracts and all the revision was the signature box. So when we approve that, if you could sign both of them, I'll get Darda sign both of them, I'll get one copy back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when do you want it back on the agenda for approval?
Let's see if we can get an answer for this next week, if possible. If not, well, have to wait till we get an answer.
Better option you could mention to her being as I do the medical examiner budget, is it something we can put in that? Because that's a county budget or it's gotta be something totally separate or?
I don't, I don't know if it'd be that.
I don't think you could put it in that.
I don't know, that would quite qualify.
The fund numbers wouldn't match, so.
Okay.
Well, we will postpone that till we get some answer. Language line.
Language line, we've had a few instances recently where this would have been very beneficial, um, where we had nine-one-one calls to. Nine-one-one calls for residents that do not speak English. I know this was brought to the board a while back and we did not move forward on it just because of who was gonna pay the cost. How was we split up, et cetera. I would really like to get this at least started in EMS side, if at all possible. Our plan is not to purchase any of equipment. We have, we have Surface Pros or a laptop in all of our vehicles. We're able to put the app right on that, or we can even put the app right on our phones that are in the vehicles. And we can communicate with those pieces of equipment. The charge is a dollar fifty per minute. There is no charge for setup fee. There's no charge for any equipment. It's only charged if we actually use the service. I, I sent an email into our billing company to try to get a response back on it. This is a, a charge that we can charge back to the patient. It doesn't sound like it's gonna be able to be charged. It'll actually be an expense of the service, so. If I do find something different automatically, you know, but right now, the way it looks, it's gonna be a charge under the service. We're only gonna be using it for. I can't see it being a long time. I've talked to the staff on, on as far as transfers go, because transfers would be our longest extended period. And they said their intent with the, with the transfers is a lot of times when they go to get the patient for transfer, they're already on this language solutions with the hospital. Hospital already has it set up. So they said a lot of times, they just talk to the patient through this translation service and find out exactly what's going on with that patient and that eliminates the need for it in route or very little use of it in route. So it's not, my concern is we're going to Iowa City, we have it turned on for three hours. You know, that can add up to a pretty decent expense and they said they don't see where that ever would happen, where we'd have to have it on full-time on a transfer, so. We may not use a lot of transfers unless, you know, something changes with the patient, we could call in at that time and, and are able to talk to the patient. Nine-one-ones is kind of the biggest situation because we come upon a patient who's down and we have no way to, you know, ask them any questions as far as what's going on with them, you know, what, what their, what their situation is. We try to use a, a translation app on our phones, a free one, and they work very poorly. You need to speak very clear and the, most of the time, the people just look at us like, what are you trying to read it back? Or what are you guys trying to say? It just doesn't make sense to them, so. The hospital uses this system. They've had very good luck with it. I guess if, if I can do it without an initial cost and only a cost of a permanent usage, if that's something you guys are okay with me pursuing and into the place. I can't see us using it more than a couple, three times a month. But if there's no monthly fee, there's only a fee for what we use. It won't be expensive unless we actually use it.
Yeah, I think that was one of my biggest concerns or ours when, when we were talking about before is figuring out how many devices we'd need or whatever, and if that's not the case for EMS, the little bit of actual usage probably won't amount to that much.
Yes, some of the hospital uses, so we have history with it and it does work very well in the hospital.
And that fits within your own levy too.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not expecting much of a monthly bill with this at all, but.
It has a potential for saving a life, I'd say you do.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, you already touched on the transfers, as long as we're just using it as needed.
Correctly.
It should be justifiable.
So with the question before on the equipment purchase, because I admit it's not here, but I can't imagine for vehicle registration, driver's license, and even for my office, the access to use the Google Translate on the phone. It's just, it's not a smooth way to communicate. Was that the issue?
For the countywide, I believe it was with the, the expense of like the equipment, so like fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
It was quite a thing.
Yeah, because, because it depends on how many different devices we need and, and all the different offices and stuff. I mean, if we had one in the courthouse and people can share it around, maybe.
Maybe somewhere.
But if everyone.
Well, I wondered, there was some way you showed it was laptop.
Yeah, why can't you put it on your laptop and one person that needs, or had their laptop or two, and you can just take the laptop up to the counter?
Not, not, not everyone has laptops.
You know, another issue, another issue was that we, you guys talked about was on the billing, how we separate.
Yeah.
Who used this and who used that. And maybe once it's in place and see how the billing actually works, then we can answer that question.
Well, and, and yours, yours should be separated anyway for the levy. So that is one aspect of it too, but yeah, just. There is a lot of unanswered questions at that point in time.
Well, for the time being, I'd make a motion to approve.
For EMS.
Agreement for EMS to use language wise.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Then, credit management discussion, Phil?
So credit management is, uh, it's a company I've used in the past, I've used. When I did billing up in Sway City as well. I did send out for some quotes from, from some other companies, through recommendations from our billing company. So what this credit management is, um, it's a way to collect our bad debts. What I've found out over history, usually when we have bad ambulance debts, it's usually from somebody out of state, somebody from out of area. It's normally not our residents. Normally our residents are, find a way to, to pay their bill or make payments on a bill. It's the people that don't live here that don't respond when we send out debt, so. It's not fair to our residents, our taxpayers supporting the service and then we don't go after the people that don't pay their bill. In the past, they've gone and used, um, Iowa Offset. We may continue to use Iowa Offset. The disadvantage to Iowa Offset is we only go after residents of Iowa. We do not go over anybody that's traveling through the area or doesn't live in Iowa. We also don't collect from them if they don't get a tax return or win at the casino or some kind of lottery. So we don't get a lot of access from Iowa Offset, but it is a, it is an option in addition to this. This, this billing, this credit management company charges thirty-two percent on accounts. We only pay them if we collect. So there's no charge if they do not collect any, any debt. We only pay them on debts that's uncollectible. So our billing company right now sends out late notices, they send out threatening letters, so they make phone calls. They do everything they can to try to collect this debt before it's ever turned over as bad debt. So we're doing what we can to collect them, but there's always gonna be bad debt. The reason I'm bringing it to your attention now, right now, we do not have any bad debt on Cassup County EMS books. We're nine months in right now, we just don't have any, have any, but we're probably gonna see some. But with the closing of the Albona books and the closing of the Sway City books, if there's bad debt that can be sitting there for the last five, six years, however long it's been, be a way to possibly collect some of that debt moving forward. Five, six years, however long it's been, um, be a way to possibly collect some of that debt moving forward. Instead of just writing it off the books and not seeing any, but.
Phil, have you talked to Todd Holmes about that at all?
I have not.
You might want to talk to him because they do like court debt that they're, you know, not collecting. So you might want to talk to Todd. I don't know if it's anything he can do or not, but. Um, I'd talk to him first.
I did not. This is how I done in the past. I didn't know if that was an option. I didn't know that was an option, but I'm sure.
I, I don't know if it is or not, but he does do some collection items, so.
I feel like, I feel like there's just specifically with debt for court proceedings.
It might be, but I, I checked with him first.
Actually, like you say, this isn't something that's pressing because we don't have anything right now to send to them. It's just.
Yeah, cause that might save you.
Because we discussed this in our meeting the other day and just kind of bring this up to you guys and we discussed and.
Yep.
Yeah.
But if we can, we can table that and I'll talk to Todd before we act on that.
Any other thoughts from the board on that? Okay, well, we'll table that for now too. Um, next, potential change to the employee handbook.
So when you guys packed it, or what I sent in with this was the sheets that we had, were using from when we were reviewing the employee handbook. And the next section up was reviewing vacation time. And then we sent it off to the attorneys to, to look at. So we know we got to discuss this vacation time. And my concern with vacation time is for my EMS staff, this does not include me, this is just the EMS staff. Their, their normal scheduled work week is forty-eight hours. They work three sixteen hour regular shifts. So we give them forty hours of vacation after a year. Uh, they can't take a week off because. They work forty-eight hours. I know the sheriff's office and the jail has different rules on their vacation time based on their hours. So we had this in this, that Donna and I had worked on and talked about, but it never went any further than that. It's kind of coming up to be vacation time. I just wondered if there's something that we could do with that. Language in the handbook to. That's been, we started this before we started Kasuth County EMS and.
Correct. I think that's the handbook in, in general. I, I'm not going to, this isn't meant to be a criticism. Change isn't really the right word because it was never in there, but we also have other departments that, that their contracts have ended, so those are not clear and so. The confusion is a lack of clarity on, on what is actually approved by you guys.
And, and until we get the handbook back from Taylor Zinkuny.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard to see what's there and what isn't because like she said, the union contract for the sheriff's office has ended. And that's not currently in our handbook.
Yeah, so when questions arise, you really don't have anything to go to. And I think that that's been a question for payroll, a question for, so it's back to your rabbit hole of things. Things just kind of go into the rabbit.
And I, I, I did get a copy of our handbook for C I J D C back from Ann actually this morning. Um, and that's a whole nother topic, but we had also sent our handbook to them and when I've been on the phone with her about that, I asked her what status of ours was and she said it's. It's on the list, but she's hoping, she hasn't completed it yet, but she's hoping to get to it soon, so. I'm, I'm hoping we get some answers back soon, but that's just because I've talked to her for C I J D C as well, so. I guess it's whether we deal with one thing at a time or if we deal with it all together and then everyone's going to say the same thing.
Yeah, cause I'm assuming when that handbook comes back, we're still going to have to hash through and see what, what, what's translation has happened even between her review. I mean, I'm sure she's going to need the legal definitions and then we have the operation.
The policy side.
The operation definitions of how things have gone and, and where they fit.
Yep.
Yes, and it's been probably two, two and a half years still. It's been a long, taking a long time.
Anyone on the board got any thoughts?
Did she give you a time frame when she said she was getting to it? So, and I know that's a weird question, but. We've got July first, there's significant changes even with our insurance. And so there's so many little, little caveats in that handbook that. It's really hard to even discuss or talk about.
Doesn't Melissa need to know what the hours is pretty soon?
Well, right now it's just the same.
Well, we just wanted by what was in the handbook because EMS was never added into it. Cause we started doing all this EMS edition, but it never finished, so. It just went by what the general language is after one year is forty hours.
It's five, I think it says five working days for one after one year and then ten working days after.
Two to eight.
Yep, and then.
Eighteen and then over eighteen.
Yeah.
But again, there's multiple departments.
It says in parentheses forty hours.
Right.
Because if it was five working days and mine are sixty hour days, that'd be eighty hours.
But, but for the jail that it doesn't matter, like the jail staff, they get. And, and it's different because I'd have to look at it because I don't know if it's in my head, but they, they have, yeah, they're reviewing that because they can carry over a different amount. So, because they get, they get five working days at twelve hours. But they don't get seven, even though they work seven days, they don't get seven days. They get five at twelve hours. The jail staff, so.
Even, even, well, five at twelve hours would be sixty.
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 So. It doesn't have.
That was what was in, that's not in the handbook. It clarified, it says the five days and that, and it comes back to that.
Their, their union contract.
I'm assuming that, I mean, not aware of the union contract, but I'm assuming that's where that wording comes from. So we don't have anything.
No.
Currently in place for those two.
I don't think in the handbook it has hours. It just says days.
And I'm helping, we're helping you out, aren't we?
I mean, I'm, I didn't, I didn't think we'd have an answer today. I'm really convinced this, this stuff that we talked in our meeting back. On April eight, so I just wanted to bring you guys' attention. It's something we're going to have to look at though because. They shouldn't be able to have a week off. And now be penalized pay wise for that week.
How far are we on the?
Pardon me?
How far are they on the handbook, do you know?
I didn't get us, I don't, I don't know if she started it yet.
Yeah.
So really we don't have any.
We don't have anything back, no.
We, there's multiple departments. I mean, HR isn't even in there, quite honestly. Um, the EMS is not in there. Uh, you know, there's, and then there's not the updates to like law enforcement, the changes in there. I mean. And in secondary, I mean, how we handle the secondary roads is this is the handbook, but there may be things in your bargaining unit that are separate from that, so.
Yep.
That we can at least send them that way, but for these other departments, it's very ambiguous on what we're.
EMS, EMS follows handbook pretty closely. I'd say probably the only deviation from the handbook is going to be on the vacation type, because we use the same holidays. We use all that system. So it's just going to be on the vacation hours because our hours do work forty-four hour shift, so. Just shows a little difference and they're just like.
Just a difference in scheduling.
Yeah.
All right, well. You guys got any thoughts for today? Or continue hounding our attorneys to get a draft back and deal with it then or?
Is that affirmation that we can give to the attorneys to say that this is something that we're.
I think that was already included in our notes, wasn't it?
They were sent their, the template and then with our changes, our working, our working document that we were working on, um, granted some of it just dail made it. But they were sent that in those notes they were sent.
Was that included with the notes that EMS?
Yes.
Hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the notes.
It's in the notes, it's inside.
So I guess we're at that point where we just kind of have to wait.
Just wait for that.
Get back to us.
But I think it's good for, if nothing else, that's kind of why I'm here, we need to keep on, we can't hound them obviously, and I know you've had great, but it's. It's been there since September, it's an understanding and we probably didn't send it until we were a year and a half into reviewing it. We weren't moving forward.
Which is part of why it feels like it's taken forever.
Yes, yes, so it's not all, it's not all on them, but I think it's just, again. There ended, there's been changes and we don't have that updated handbook.
Yep. Well, keep it higher on the priority list.
Pretty soon you're going to have people that have been there either.
I do.
Yeah.
Should we honor their original hire date, so?
Right.
I have some that have accrued their forty hours and put in for vacation for the summer and it's like, well, I'm going to get paid.
Well, they should, I mean, prior to a policy change, they should be able to use comp time or something else to supplement it, right?
So the nice thing is the one thing that I wanted to achieve with this new scheduling, moving from. From Algonquin to Kasuth County was to keep this comp time thing down. You do have the opportunity to earn comp time, but my current payroll out of the eight employees I have, we have a total of twenty hours of comp time on the books. When we were with Algonquin, we had pretty much everybody maxed out at eighty hours a piece.
Okay, that's good.
So we've really reduced, over time, we've really reduced that stuff. Now, I'm not saying they, they still have the opportunity, they can move some to that. For the people that don't have vacation time accrued and they want to take some time off, they can work on that, but as of right now, it's very little.
Okay. Well, anything further for discussion on this today? Otherwise.
Thanks for your time.
Beat the dead horse another time.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks. All right. Yeah, you want to call Doug?
Hey.
Take a two minute break.
Hi Doug, we'll be ready in a couple of minutes right away. Yep, thank you. Start planting it Roger?
Just started.
It's early. It is. We're starting today.
I planted a whole four acres last night.
Okay. It's hard to beat it Roger.
Corn, just had to get the planters set.
Yeah.
Make sure everything worked. It takes longer to start.
Yeah.
Many change tractors on this.
Okay.
Shouldn't that polish this? I gotta look to see what I'm doing now. Nice, so pretty good garden. It's all young.
Yeah, right.
I'll get some nice flower plants. Oh, that garden, it looks like I should be starting one. I think you can do all kinds of types of flowers. It's good and healthy. I grow three flowers. And vegetables. Berbs and spices, herbs, herbs. And no, not the funny kind of herbs. There will be no growing of the daffodils.
All right, Doug, we are ready for construction on the right of way.
Uh, we do not have any, uh, applications. We've, uh, been discussing with Ron Munson and there is a, uh. Kind of a proposal that Ron has been visiting with us about. This is over, uh, north of Wesley on highway. Uh, or excuse me, R fourteen, county road R fourteen. Uh, Ron recently purchased land on the east side of the road. Uh, there are tile, an outlet into the road ditch and then go through a large. A hundred seventeen inch by seventy-nine inch corrugated metal pipe. And Ron is proposing to redo some of the outlets and get those so that they are actually outletting on the apron. Of the culvert and then clearing out that waterway and repairing that, restoring it back, so it, uh, would be tillable. I just want to make sure if Ron would come in with all of the application, uh, that, and sign. Would it be okay for the road department, the county engineer's office to give Ron verbal, uh, permission to do this work? Uh, Kasuth County is providing material to, uh, from the corrugated metal pipe out inlet. To the tile, so they got good material there and it'll get it outside of the road right of way. That, that would be, and then also I think some little rip wrap because there is some washing alongside of that, uh, culvert. Uh, some rip wrap to protect that bank. Ron would be responsible for placing, uh, replacing, replacing the stuff. So we just want to make sure that the board is okay with that. Okay with that, otherwise, I guess we can bring the permit, uh, next week, if he turns it in, he'll go for that.
He's doing the work himself?
I believe he's having ready gravel and excavating, doing the work.
They wanna know the situation.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a reputable, yes.
Do we have that bonding requirement added to that yet, or?
Not yet, I do have some information that I wanna talk about during our discussion.
Okay.
About that, so.
I think as long as it's ready, I have a problem with the. I should say as long as it's a bonded contractor, I don't have a problem with that.
Fine by me.
Insurable.
Insurable, yes.
Insured.
Okay, so it is alright with the board supervisors?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That is all that we have for. Work in the construction of the road right away. Uh, for discussion, I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about the secondary road budget and the county budget for that matter. Yesterday, there was a meeting and I know. I, I've already visited with a lot of road employees and they are concerned about road department and road department budget. And I heard about this, uh, yesterday while I was eating dinner. It was reported by WHOTV out of Des Moines. Uh, Supervisor Chair Kyle Stecker said some of the ways they had taxed in the past were no longer allowed due to a new law called. Called ALSPYL seven eighteen, which meant less money could be taxed. In an already tight budget discussion, he told the group that the libraries could be fully funded only if there was a reduction. In the road department spending. So far, the board has not been able to come to a consensus about reducing the road de- department budget. I believe, and this is quoted, I believe we need to rein in spending and that starts with our own secondary road budget, said Stecker. Again, quotes, I would personally support restoring library funding to the levels in the current budget in the form of a budget amendment. After the fiscal year starts. If we as a board can come up with an agreement in reduction to the secondary road budget to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands. Expenditures. In service area is seven. It is in your budget. For current fiscal year, total expenditures that are budgeted for current fiscal year is twelve million nine hundred two thousand seven hundred sixty two dollars. For the year that you are budgeting for. The dollar amount is ten million fifty nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. So I believe that is a, an expend, that is less expenditures. Further, if you go into service zero, service area is zero. And if you look at roadway construction, actual roadway construction in fiscal year twenty three, which was just completed. Was four million one hundred eighty two thousand four hundred eighteen dollars. For budget year this year, it's two million eight hundred sixty seven thousand two hundred ninety five dollars. And for budget year, what we are coming up to, it's two million. That's capital projects, roadway construction. And again, the roadway, roads and transportation under expenditure summary is just what I just read to you. So expenditures for the road department are being reduced. I, will everyone please agree on it?
Like twenty percent or so, isn't it?
Okay, now, evidently, there's some sort of amendment coming up already in July. And we have one board member, the chair of the board of supervisors. Making statements, and I wasn't here, maybe, maybe you were incorrectly quoting. But the quote had to do with reducing expenditures more in the road department. Is that true? Was that the quote?
That is.
Okay, so, I offered, this was on the ninth of April. I offered ways to reduce expenditures. And we are already, we're not, I've already contacted the seasonal mowers, I told them they were not needed. We're not ro- mowing road sides. The answer on the phone from the road department, from the foreman, from any road department employee is going to be the following. The Cassuth County Board of Supervisors has reduced the expenditures in the secondary road budget. The Cassuth County Board of Supervisors and Cassuth County Engineer has determined that mowing road sides is a way that will reduce costs. Because of this, the secondary road department is not regularly mowing roadways in calendar year twenty twenty four. It's important for the board of supervisors, when people come in here and ask that same question. That that be the answer. If you get a group of people and all of a sudden you're gonna wanna have roadside mowing started. It's gonna be difficult to control expenditures. Okay? Same thing for painting edgelines. We've decided not to paint edgelines on the roads. The same answer will be set, and it's important. Now. If there are more expenditures that the board would like to. Take away from the road department, please let me know. But I don't know where you're gonna trim two hundred thousand dollars from. And I don't know, is the board's intention, is it the board of supervisors' intention to solve the library budget? By reducing expenditures in secondary roads?
I don't know, all the dollars would come from secondary roads. But there may be reduction in, in multiple areas to reach that and to have a definite answer right now, wouldn't even. Know that the discussions will be had, yes, that there may be some reductions in different areas of expenditures.
So.
Not, not just the secondary roads, I think we'll have to look at some other areas too. But with the secondary road being a large portion of the budget, there is going to be some expenditures reduced a little bit to help cover that.
So how do you expect a department head to, I mean, it would be very, very easy. No, I'm gonna say it this way, it takes a lot of work to keep secondary roads in as good a shape as what they are. Cassuth County has very good secondary roads. It's because of the employees in the secondary road department, it's because of employees in the engineer's office. We could allow the secondary roads to. Go to hell. Simply put. In, in a hurry, it doesn't take that much planning. But it does take planning in order to keep the roads in as good a shape as what they want. How do you expect a department head, you just passed a budget, and now I'm hearing. That in July, you're gonna amend the budget and you are going to change. Area totals. Is that what I just heard? Is that the board's? Is that what the board is saying? Carter? I mean, it's yours, I don't think Jack and Roger are gonna say that. I've heard it twice, I've heard it from two people, Carter, what are you gonna say?
I think our budget amendment is more focused on the library expenses, e- even if that came to simply reducing fund balance. I mean, I, I totally get where you're coming from there, as a department, how do you plan for anything when the board?
So would you support reducing expenditures that are in the budget today, um, in July?
Depends how that looks, but I.
Well, I can't.
I prefer not to change anything.
Well, I can't, I can't go out, order up, order up equipment, I can't go out, let projects. Um, knowing that the budget is not passed. In, in that, in essence, y'all should have voted no, what you're saying. I mean, you, you voted yes on a budget, you shouldn't have voted for it. Cause you're saying, we're gonna change it already in July. First, the first week of the damn fiscal year, we're gonna go change it. That's what you're saying to me. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're meaning?
No, I don't support doing that.
Yeah, but you're gonna do it.
I don't know that.
Okay, we have ending budget, ending balance, a hundred fifty thousand dollars next year. Next fiscal year, if that happens. What is the solution for the board? What is the board gonna come up with? Because right now, you're using money out of the balance to operate the road department. Have you ever given that any thought? Anyone? I mean, are you going to provide to the rural citizens of Cassuth County that use rural roads, secondary roads? Are you, are you expecting that service to ma- be the same as what it is? It's already been reduced.
Already been changed, yeah.
But. What is the expectation of the board of supervisors?
It's gonna be less, cause you watch it's gonna be a couple million dollars, can't be the same.
Well. There, we're talking about expenditures, and if you're gonna have the same expenditures, you gotta have revenue. So, I, I mean, what is the plan? You've got to be able to look, you, when you do a budget. The idea is to get to April twenty third and then it's over. The budget should be something that gets you through the next three or four years. Anything? Okay, so you're gonna be, how are you gonna be treating the road department? There's a bunch of road employees, one and all. I'm asking. Kyle, you brought it up. How are you going to, first of all, what you say is not true, expenditures in the road department are decreasing. They're not increasing. It's in your own budget that you just voted against.
Decreasing over the highest dollars they've ever been. Because of budget amendments.
When bridges are coming in at sixty percent higher than what they were in two thousand eighteen. When rotary surfacing is coming in over sixty percent higher than what it was in two thousand seventeen. When equipment is coming in higher, when routine maintenance of the equipment. Is getting more difficult because of increased prices. What do you expect? What is it? You just expect us to run on the same dollar?
I, I think we're gonna have to have solutions to.
Okay, well, give me the solutions. Again. We gotta start preparing, we can't just get a year from today and be in the same boat. Next December, next January, we're gonna have some new, new, uh, board members, we aren't gonna start budget till January. I would assume that's typically what happens. What is the plan? What do you want, what do you want the expenditures to be?
Well, currently, we have three and a half million dollars budget for new equipment, we've got one point one that's spent. My.
No, 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 no. Let's not talk line items, let's talk budget figures.
That's a line item in the budget.
Yeah, let's talk total budget, cause this budget you passed today had no line items on it at all. It had expenditures, let's talk expenditures, let's talk revenue.
That is an expenditure.
Here, you just don't get it. I, I'll go without, so you don't wanna buy equipment. We got one million in the next year, we got one million dollars in that line item. You don't, I won't spend it, but I want a commitment from the board of supervisors. That when a machine is broke down. And we cannot plow snow, or we not, cannot provide the service, when that person calls. There's gotta be, there's gotta be an answer, sorry, we could not buy any equipment this year. So, we gotta wait for that piece of equipment to be repaired. Therefore, the service that we are providing today is not as good as what it was in the past. That's fine, but I, I just want that committed.
And we have six trucks that we bought in this last year and four of them still are not on the road, is that correct?
That's correct. We are, we are dependent on a third party to get that work completed. And if you go back to twenty eighteen, we did not have a third party doing that, therefore, that third party cost was not part of the budget. We were fortunate to have an employee who did that work. Things change. When that employee retired, I mentioned it to the board, he saved Cassuth County a lot of money. Did it himself, knew what was going on. That's in the past. We gotta start talking about the future.
What purpose does buying more trucks on top of that if, make if we. Don't have four trucks that we already have that are brand new that aren't on the road?
Well, since it's taking not much longer, we should have already bought two chassis and had them prepared so that they can do it. If you wait. If, if you wait for everything to break down and then buy it, it doesn't happen, it just doesn't happen overnight.
It's not like going to Canada to buy a new vehicle.
So. Again, I, I. And I just want, if that's what it is, if that's what the board wants, the board supervisors chooses to save money by not buying equipment. Please be prepared. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but if it does. That will be the reason, we don't have equipment that is well maintained. We have equipment that is old. I mean, I don't, I don't understand. I certainly hope. That secondary roads is not the lowest priority for the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors. I'm still waiting for the priority of cuts, as well as other department heads, we haven't been given anything. Can we at least agree? I, I'd like all five of you to be able to say expenditures in the secondary road department are not as great. As what they are in the current fiscal year, the budgeted expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Are less than the budgeted expenditures in the current year of twenty twenty four.
Correct, yeah.
So why do you say then that? We gotta rein in spending? I think that was the point.
I think you know my answer by now, we've had a lot of conversations.
Let's get it out, let's get it out in the open. What is the answer? I don't know it, the people that are listening right now wanna know it. Isn't, isn't your, isn't your desire to reduce the amount of labor in the road department? Isn't your desire to reduce the amount of equipment in the road department? Isn't your desire then, because you're gonna be reducing the labor in the road department and the equipment in the road department? To provide less of a service to the people that use the county roads, is that it? Is that it?
I, I think I have had very clear concerns over several things. And I'm not interested in responding to questions in that manner right now. We've, we've gone time and time again with answering the same questions and yet you say they're unanswered. I would disagree, but.
You would disagree with what?
The fact that your questions are unanswered. I think I've made my position fairly clear.
And then just make it clear again. Carter, Josh, Roger, Jack, is that your position?
We're gonna have less services on the money than he's put in at my jurisdiction.
I'd say Cassuth County would have to be in a very, very bad spot in order for me to wanna cut staff out of the road department. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way I see that as well.
What is the budget, what is an ending, ending balance of a hundred fifty thousand in the road department?
It's not good.
Cause next year, if that's what it is, and we're already using over a million dollars of balance, where's that million dollars gonna come from, Carter?
Oh, I, I hear you, yeah.
I don't think that's the first place.
Well, I don't know where the money's coming from. I mean, in all actuality, the Iowa code allows for counties to let sixteen and seven, eight cents from the general fund. And three dollars and three eight cents in the rural service, I shouldn't say the general fund, the general valuations, the taxable values of all the counties. And three dollars and three eight cents in the rural areas. Right now, the road department's getting a dollar forty-eight, less than half. We are, we are letting the maps for all properties in Cassuth County. However, the legislature has capped the dollars that can increase. That puts a, puts a bind on every county. When I talk to other engineers, other counties, they don't seem to have the same problem that Cassuth County has. So somehow, there's one of two things gonna happen. If we have an ending balance at the end of this fiscal year, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we either reduce expenditures by whatever revenue can increase, cannot, cannot increase. If there's a shortage of revenue, the budget's gonna show it. It's a challenge. And I want the board supervisors to make those decisions. I don't need to be thrown under the bus with quotes to WHO, with quotes on K L G A. When the board does not have pride in secondary roads, we got a problem. And you better be telling your constituents that these roads are too good, we gotta do some changing. Would anyone else like to speak about the budget? The road department, the road, the Iowa DOT road budget was submitted April ninth. It is not the same as what the budget this morning was submitted. I don't know when, I can't amend it, to be honest with you. But it's gonna have to be amended so that both budgets are the same. I asked the board prior to the ninth to get your budget to where you wanted it. Does anyone disagree with that statement, I guess?
The only thing that changed was the location some of the dollars were coming from. The dollars didn't change.
The expenditures out of the secondary road department fund is changed.
Location, yes.
The dollars, the dollars out of the secondary road department fund has changed, which causes an amendment. I am not going to allow Cassuth County to get in trouble with the Iowa Department of Transportation. The board supervisors has already done enough in this fiscal year to get in trouble with the Department of Transportation and State of Iowa. Now, Doc, got it? It's difficult to work when no communication is going on, no advice. It is, it's terrible. And then, to get an answer like that, you caused it. You called up the auditor on a weekend and changed the damn budget. Yes, you did. Take the money out of general supplemental and have it come out of the secondary road fund. That changed everything.
We talked about it as a board that we would have to move stuff back across the funds and undo the stuff we previously did to balance our fun, ending fund balances to hit our targets.
Well, now, now that the result of that, the consequence of that decision now is that this Iowa Department of Transportation budget is not the same as the county budget. And it needs to be changed. It needs to be amended. I don't know when it can be amended. If that's gonna happen in July, and then, still don't know what's gonna happen with the libraries. I'm a supporter of libraries. I'm a supporter of economic development. I am a supporter of, of the, of everything. But don't, don't fix it by reducing what secondary roads can do. We're all in this together. Here is our current road crossing with tile, the policy. It outlines what Cassuth County will do. It also outlines that they would like to do it according to drainage, the steps that are needed according to four sixty, in the Iowa code, chapter four sixty. If this is approved and adopted, it'll obviously have a date change. And the only change that we would recommend is that, right now, our policy, the statement on an open cut, which is on page two and it's shown in blue. Right now, we pay for the cost of materials to cross road right away. That's the way it is in writing. As a practice, we have been providing the materials to cross the road right away. That way, we know that we're getting the product that we want. So the only change in the policy will be to provide materials. We're going through our application for crossing. We do have a contractor listed there. We are going to put in that they need to have, a contractor has to have insurance. If the board desires for a bond to be placed with each crossing, we can certainly do that. Do it in some sort of a cashier's check. I believe that five thousand dollars would be adequate. If, if it's not put in correctly, Cassuth County could go fix it and we would keep the five thousand dollars. I don't know what the board's, I'd like to know the board's feeling on that. Should it be higher, should it be lower? And I would have that from the owner of the land, not necessarily the contractor.
And they'll take five thousand, as you mentioned. Then they get, they make, they make, they think twice about that, giving the, the right information as far as how we install it and could help you. That's a pretty sizable change for the contractors.
All right.
Would, would we be able to have the landowner or the contractor provide that? Because some landowners may not be able or willing, but if their contractor provides it, I guess, that's still the insurance that we need to make sure the job's done correctly.
Contractor's gonna do the work.
If the contractor's doing the work, the landowner's gonna be paid.
Yeah, right.
And if somebody's putting in tile, I would assume that they're gonna have more than five thousand dollars to pay a contractor for tile. So I would like to have it be a landowner. That way, the landowner knows it's got to be done correctly.
I'm fine with that. I just think an either or would be more flexibility, but I don't have an issue with that.
But you said it's be something to improve the insurance or whatever.
Yeah, we will, we will ask him. A lot of, a lot of local contractors already have insurance certificates naming Cassuth County as additional insured, every year we give one. We just have it in a file. That's, that's not a common, we have a lot of contractors that have that, and utility companies that are already working in the road right away. So that may already be on file. It wouldn't necessarily be with the application.
Our, yeah, well, that.
We could create a, a list of Cassuth County, list of, of responsible contractors as well. And if it's a, if it's, if they're on a responsible list, waive some of the needs for some of the information as well. Right now, for example, for secondary roads, when we bid a construction project, we give bidding proposals out to people that are on the Iowa Department of Transportation Qualified Bidders list. If they're not on it, we will give them an estimate, an estimated proposal, but not a bidding proposal. We can create our own list of workers as well. Well, we will get that application and I'll go over that with the board. If you would please review this and next week we'll talk about it. If those are acceptable, we will have that on the board's agenda in the following week to renew that or to approve the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I've been driving gravel roads and gravel roads are in very good shape, I think. I guess I was wondering what the board felt about beginning four day work weeks for the road department?
Some, some are here, so.
I was thinking about sometime beginning of May, maybe May sixth or so.
That sounds good.
Does the board have any issue with that?
Don't we typically do it a little later?
We do. But this year, we did not have much of a winter.
Yeah, spring came early.
I have some photographs of some property that had quite a bit of wind erosion. They're in your, um, your folder.
Did you take these in the last week?
No.
Oh, cause I remember I took a couple and sent it to the landowner a couple few weeks ago, too.
You sent it to the landowner or you sent it to the tenant?
Or the, excuse me, the tenant, yeah.
I've been busy with the landowner.
Good.
And I will be writing a letter to the landlord. Somebody went ahead and started cleaning their area, section nine Prairie Township. I stopped by yesterday, informed them they did not have a permit to work in the road right away. This was not the tenant, it was some sort of in-law. I don't believe they stopped. They moved to another road that has a similar situation in, I think it's section twenty-four of Wesley, maybe twenty-three of Wesley, and started working on that last night. I told, I told that operator and I told the person they called that they're not, they don't have permission to work in the road right away. Whatever they do, don't go up to that other road machine and start, they did it anyway. These are tenants. And the, the person I talked to told me they're just trying to be good stewards of the land. And that's a quote, by excavating out material.
Good steward, then they want to let you rope it.
When I brought that up, they didn't ask to talk about that.
That's being the good steward, not letting them go up the dirt.
Will the board support me? If this is going on, other people start cleaning out their own, cleaning out road ditches, will the board support me?
No, I think it'd be a good, I, I think it's good that you're sending a letter to the landlord. They need to be aware about that.
Is, is your plan to clean it out with our equipment and haul the material away or what?
Yes.
Okay.
And try to restore the road ditch at their expense. They've already done it. If we have to reseed, I don't know.
For a dirt. At least you shouldn't be digging in the ditch with teeth in your pockets, digging up the side of it, down in the bottom.
I would think you'd be, I would think you'd be able to feel the difference, but.
We also had a, we also had a landowner decide to go out and maintain his own roads. They were maintained on the fifth of April, he did it on the sixth or the seventh. And I was notified about it on the eleventh. That's a little bit difficult. All I have is a motor grader in a guy's yard. I did not, I did not catch the guy doing it, but it's pretty obvious he went and did it. I hope that the board didn't tell this person to go out and maintain his road.
Is that done by Saint Joe?
Yes, it is.
I think I know the situation there.
What is the situation?
No, I think I know who you're talking about.
Was he given permission to do that? Okay, construction. Uh, the bridge south of Titanca, they're driving north, pure piling today. They're supposed to start. So that's going on the north side. South side, they'll be decking soon. Merriman poured their bridge deck last. Merriman poured their bridge deck last Monday, and now they're starting to bury a rail down by George Gunter's. Resurfacing, they started crushing gravel, and we have a pre-construction conference on Thursday for that work. And we are doing road maintenance up by, well, actually, we're over by Wesley now. The Blacktop Service is crack filling roads. We finished a road up to the north end yesterday. They finished. We had a good safety meeting on April 19th. I'd really like to get some quotes on equipment, however, due to uncertainties with our budget, I, I've got to, I've got, I've got to evaluate everything. I'd like to give, we need a loader. We need a motor grader. That's all the road department. I, as zoning administrator, am traveling to a Floyd County wind energy conversion system. They invited me over. There's a workshop. I'm going to that. And still waiting on financial assurance for the Ways and Hands Association.
Doug, the road up north that they recently finished crack filling and stuff, which road was that?
830 by Leg Yard.
Okay.
I mean, the, we have plans, or we have a quote to repair the road south of Sway City from Highway 9 to 842. It's about $300,000. Do you want just, do you want that road to stay in the condition it's in and worsen, or would you like that?
What repairs does that entail?
We are, we will be slurry leveling all the holes and putting a full micro surface on it.
How about R14? I know we talked about that before.
We are slurry, we are planning to slurry level that. And again, if the board doesn't want me to maintain paved roads, let me know now, because we can start saving money.
No, I think the road south of Sway City needs attention. There's a lot of substantial.
It's not the only road in Cassuth County that needs attention. There's a lot of roads. I mean,
Long fast microbes in March are starting to get worse.
We do have, we do have some plans on maintenance on that. Cassuth County has approximately 3, 973 square miles, largest in the state. Cassuth County has approximately 1,647 miles of open roads. No other county in Iowa has a larger road system. Cassuth County has 39 secondary road employees. 38 counties in the state of Iowa have a larger number of secondary road employees than what Cassuth County has. Cassuth County's ratio of open mile roads per secondary road employee is 42.239 miles per employee. One county in the state has a larger ratio of miles per secondary road employee. Cassuth County's ratio of Area 7 expenses per miles of open road is $6,388.30 per mile of road. 70 counties in the state of Iowa have ratios of Area 7 expenditures per miles of open roads, larger. 70. I think what Cassuth County is doing in the road department is pretty good. Some would be proud of. Not something to be negative about. And I would hope, again, that the board is not going to let that get poorer. Take pride in that. And if you do want it to be poorer, please let me know.
All right, anything further from the board for Doug? All right. Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome.
Are you ready for discussion with auditor?
Yeah, I think I have anything.
Okay. Okay.
Two meetings at Board of Health last week. Had some new people from the state there, introduced themselves. Just talked to over 70. Chilled myself there. And yesterday, had an early childhood, had early certification in the state. Well, I'm sorry, Paul. As I've been being proud of the state as far as getting re-certified, just a lot of unanswered questions as far as what the, what the state is cutting on, or whether it's still a work to regional, regional or child organization. I explained to you about what we had with the regionalization, especially with mental health, years ago. We got 21, 22 counties, disaster. It's working a lot better now that we have about eight counties or nine counties involved with our mental health. Everybody get of that, so that would be a disaster if they went to regionalization. That's all, all of the year, and that some of it, we should get re-certified more probably, so.
Okay.
And somebody, well, you'll have to think about who you want to put on that board next year. Start thinking out, it would be Board of Health and Early Childhood, both of me that represent a board on both of those.
I didn't have a meeting last week?
Okay.
I was gonna have K C D C meeting, but I got canceled because of COVID worries. Other than that, I did not have any meetings.
No meeting, maybe it's a pool next week?
I got C I J D C on Friday, as I mentioned earlier when we were talking on the mental health transport stuff, so. That's what I had.
Okay.
Or will have. Anything else for discussion here? Roger, if you got a minute afterwards, I'll talk to you on a repair request. It's right, but on the border between our two districts, so I can mention that, and we'll get paperwork filled out for that, but otherwise, that's all I got.
Motion adjourned.
All right, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at 12:18.